This conference will now be recorded.
The counselors are making noise at 10:30, 11:00, 11:30 at night. Sure, I'll talk to them. Nothing is ever resolved. So it ended up at the end of the summer, we had a meeting with the owners, the camp owners. And we thought it was a good meeting. We thought they heard our concerns. One of the questions specifically was, do you have any intention on, once the camp's over, to have outside groups come and use the facilities? And the owner looked right in our faces and said, no. Okay? That was maybe a week or two before Labor Day weekend. Labor Day weekend happens. Friday night, 10 o'clock, I'm sitting with my family in the cabin, and the walls are shaking. Went over to the camp with my son, and there was a pool party going on. It was almost like a frat party, screening and music blaring and dancing and carrying on. When we expressed our shock and surprise, the owner of the camp, who's on apprentices, came over, and apparently he had allowed a group from Boston to come, a group with maybe 80 young adults, to use the facility for the weekend. And I'm sure there were other educational or cultural things, but basically they were there at the party, and certainly didn't have an investment in the community in terms of quiet or behavior. The, it was a
Was that a date, was that?
It was, at this point, it was 10:30 at night. And there didn't seem to be any indication that the party was going to slow down or stop. There was a police officer there, and when the owner, who's on apprentices, came over, and it was a sense that the police had been called, the head of the group that came ran over and said, oh, no, 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 I hired him for security. But this officer can certainly attest to what was going on. So the owner, being very angry, when questioned by us, his responses were, this is my property, I own it, you can't tell me what to do, you can't tell me how to run my business. This was after we had had this meeting, and it seemed like our concerns were heard. So our concern is that, which is interesting, if, I believe I sent some emails, I might not have sent it to you, because I'm just not tech savvy. So our concerns are that is Labor Day a precursor into what's going to happen over the course of the year in different ways? And then I saw a post that was written eight months ago on one of the owner's LinkedIn, and he talks about his vision for the camp. And there's a paragraph that says, and I'm paraphrasing, that the vision is they want this to become a community center, a cultural community center, with including a summer camp, weekend retreats, exhibitions, shows, I mean, et cetera, where parents and kids can come and, again paraphrasing, be, you know, be part of the community. So they're seeing this as being around community center. Which is interesting, because we felt that Labor Day was a precursor into something more. Well, yeah, it's. So anyway, that's my collaboration, the original emails.
Thank you. All right, is there anything else that either of you would like to add?
Yes. My name is Kyle Hader. My family and I have been part of the Monterey and Marlboro community for over 60 years. We've been proud paying tax owners, taxpayers since 1959, time of Monterey, and then my family bought the Seven Arts community. And for those 60 years, we've had an expectation and a relationship that can happen. This particular year was very different, and I see it as a learning year. I don't want to sort of go through the email I sent that described very specific pieces, but what I hope to come from this initial meeting is an ongoing conversation with the owners of the camp, what now may not be, but what I would consider the off-season, between now and the summer of 2023, where we can begin to work through some of these issues. So that the fresh start for next year is that everyone sort of has been heard, accommodations and ways we've been able to negotiate issues have been resolved through, and there's a clear protocol for going forward. Now, Mary talked about the camp having a meeting with the community. I was not invited to that meeting. So the camp director apparently is very selective in who she chooses to come to the meeting or not. That I think is something that we need to work on. I think there needs to be a way for us not to see this camp become new England, that this becomes another issue for the town where camp feels isolated and entitled. And I think we can't let that go as community and as select board. I think this is a good first learning year, and I think we need to establish protocols and ways we can communicate and clarify and problem solve together.
Is there anything else to add?
I believe we were all under the impression that this was going to be a summer camp. When Half Moon wanted to sell it to a blimp group, not just the immediate neighbors, but people all around the lake really had a fit and stuff that's there. And now it seems that if this is his intention, that it's going to be a similar kind of situation. And do we have any control over what's going to be happening there? I feel we were hoodwinked, actually.
Jill, I see. Online, are you, are you wishing to add something to the comments? All right, well, let us know.
Joe, do you have anything you want to add?
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, hi. Well, I mean, I guess like the one concern, and I'm probably just restating what has already been said, I was actually the person that directly asked the camp owners if they had any intention of renting out the facility after the summer. And he said, absolutely not. Our business is the nine weeks that camp is in season. And so I felt really good about that. He proudly showed us around, and I, I do feel that, I guess concerned if he couldn't have answered honestly at that time, the facility had to have been booked for the Labor Day weekend when we met in August. So if he's not being truthful about that, you know, I guess I have concerns about the quality of neighbor that they're going to be. And, you know, neighbor not only for Seven Arts, but for, you know, every neighbor in Monterey who lives on the lake.
Mary, when you went to visit for the Labor Day party and the pool party, what sort of sound system did they appear to be using? Did you notice at all? Well, I heard who made speakers. Could you see the speakers anywhere? I want to say that I did by the pool, but I'm not 100% sure.
Okay.
Because at that, at that point, I was so shocked. And
And it wouldn't have been what you were looking for, but it was still worth asking in case something
Yeah, well, I definitely heard speakers and bass.
Right.
I'd like to add on.
I have a question.
One minute.
Okay.
Kyle's speaking.
So that event that Mary's talking about, our cottage is at the lower part of the property on Lakeside. So there's quite a distance between the swimming pool the camp has and the lakefront at Lake Buell. And my neighbor James and I both heard this party going on. So much so that I thought, next time around, I'm going to start doing decibel checks. Of course, this is a, you know, double short in real late, but I know for next year, when sound seems to be out of the ordinary, I'm going to be tracking that. Maybe this might be one way of trying to set a policy of what might be an appropriate level or not. Anecdotally, I want to say that James Burns is a new neighbor. He bought my aunt and uncle's cottage, who've been neighbors of mine for 59 years. And he was going to start playing his guitar, and he had a great deal of respect to say, hey, let me know if it's too loud. And of course, it wasn't, but there was that sensibility of neighbors to say, I respect your nearby, I'm going to do what I do, and if it's a problem for you, please let me know. That's the kind of sensibility that I aspire this camp to do the best.
Thank you. And Jill?
So I was remembering when we had the meeting over at the camp, and we were talking about the sound and how the sound travels. James, who's one of Kyle's neighbors also, you know, we were all talking about what could be done to try to mitigate how the sound traveled down to the lake and also into the neighboring properties. And so they were certainly very well aware of how the sound was traveling, but it was making me think that if their intention to use the facility during the winter is allowed, the trees will not have their leaves. And so what is loud now will be tenfold in terms of volume, because there won't be a buffer for that. And so, you know, I just think it's worth considering how the sound is going to continue to travel and impact the people there. That's it.
Thank you, Jill. One last thing, Kyle.
So for my family and I, it's not just an issue of sound. There's an issue of water safety as well. And multiple times, the campers have been on our property or are on our docks. We've contacted the camp saying, this is an issue, this is a safety issue. If they get injured because they're playing on our dock and slip because the ducks do what ducks do, and our rafts, we don't want to be liable for a child who's from Israel coming to the States. So it's how they're going to explain that they're on private property. And many times, you talk to the camp director about helping manage the water safety, helping them manage the counselors to let the campers know where it's appropriate, how to respect private property. That did not happen at all throughout the summer, even after repeated times.
Mary?
There was also, I don't know how many times it happened, but at least once drone, a drone went. And I believe we were told that it was because they wanted to take pictures for brochures. But there's an expectation of privacy that we have, and that wasn't something that they told us about, or, you know, gave us a heads up in case perhaps we didn't want to be up on the beach when that drone went around.
We were told that this dancing, which takes place every night after dinner, has to take place on the basketball court, which is right behind Mary's house. And that was the only flat surface that they had. In fact, that's not true. There is another flat surface near 57.
That's the ball field.
Yeah.
All right, so I think we have a good sense of the issues between the letters that Kyle and Mary have written to us. Thank you for joining us as well here. The select board, I think the next step is for the select board to figure out where the, what the town's role is in all of this. As you may know, I know noise is only one of the issues, but the town does now have a noise ordinance at this time. There is still the, you know, the Massachusetts law of disturbing the peace, which has a different threshold than a noise ordinance might. But that's not to say that it's the only avenue that, you know, we could use to try and smooth, smooth out the relationship between the camp and the neighbors.
I did want to, it just occurred to me, one of the things you asked in your letter was regarding a permit.
Right.
So in fact, there isn't a permit issued. There are building permits for the renovations they did, and there are health department permits for health inspections, but there isn't a permitting process for the camp itself. So it isn't, that isn't an opportunity we have. And I'm not even sure at this point, since the, this is a new owner, but since the camp has been operating for many years, I don't know what, even if we were to change the bylaw concerning that, I don't know how it would act retroactively. It's something we have to research. But that doesn't mean we don't have any options. I'm just saying, there's no permit to give you because there's no permitting process.
So clarifying question, is there any, I guess, camp organization that comes, checks on safety and security issues? The water safety to me is a real concern, the loud music being played this year. I can't imagine a young child calling out for help being hurt over that. And, you know, actually, I enjoy having kids at the camp. It's not about anti-camp. It's now looking at kids that are put in situations where the counselors seem to be enjoying the community, and the campers are sort of left to do what campers do. That's why I see they're going all over the place, because no one taught them how to, how to control crime. My concern is somebody's going to get hurt.
And Mary?
I think Kyle brings up a good point. None of us are anti-camp. You know, it's, it's, it is enjoyable, but even when I go down to the lake to see little kids having fun. But what has happened this summer has become so intrusive and so, it's almost like it's, it's, there isn't an awareness and acknowledgement that this is a camp nestled within residential homes in the country, and, and there's an expectation of, at certain times, quiet tranquility. It's the country. It's, it's a small lovely town, and it's country, and there doesn't seem to be that acknowledgement. That's
So, yeah, I think moving forward, it's really incumbent upon the select board now that we're aware of these issues to determine, you know, how we might move forward. And we talked about meeting with the owner and or director of the camp after hearing from you all on text to begin a discussion, but we just didn't want to do that, you know, all at once. And look into, you know, try to resolve things in a neighborly way and then, but also look into any legal recourse and potentially something like a noise ordinance, but we'll have to go, we'll have to research.
I just want to ask the grace, my neighbor James, who's called in from the West Coast, has just joined us a bit late. I want to make sure that if there is time for him to speak, there's a time for him to sort of chip in. If not, that's okay.
Yeah, hi, James. We've just been discussing some of the concerns that you and your neighbors have had about the new camp come on, at Half Moon. Noise and the water safety and other behaviors and how to smooth things out between the neighborhood and the camp.
Did we cover? Can you guys hear me? Am I loud?
Yes, we can hear you well.
I brought this up with, we had a meeting with the camp, and I brought this up with this specifically, because I was there one day, and one of the, one of the really young campers, like six or seven years old, was on a kayak he couldn't control, and he basically almost crashed into our dock. And I realized that we are in a position of heavy liability, and in a day, an age of heavy litigation, I would like to see some type of protection put in, because their staff is not very good. And several times, they had to go out and rescue kids off the shoreline and push them back away, and that, I'm just afraid that, you know, we live in a time of litigation. I want to know if somehow we can have them build in some type of protection for us so that when a kid, eventually somebody's going to make a mistake and ran into a boat, Kyle's boat or somebody's boat, and then parents are going to have, they're going to come, they'll come at everybody, and I would like to see the camp protect us because they are, you know, they're not controlling, if they don't control their staff and the kids, one of their dominion, then we are being held, we are vulnerable in many ways. And I want, I would like to see if we can kind of get included in protections for that. Have we discussed that at all?
No, but now we have.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not familiar with, you know, homeowners insurance and liability. None of us are lawyers, but we can look into what, you know, the town might do to try to make sure that campers, you know, stay safe on the water and are educated and know what property they're supposed to be on and what property they're not supposed to be on, so that there's no
And that's, that's all one good. I appreciate, I appreciate that's good talk, but we all know kids, teenagers, we know young kids do not obey rules, and they go off and do what they, you know, we're all young. And like I said, in the Cove, we are, we are so close, and, you know, there have been, there have been excursions onto the properties late at night and during the day. Again, as much as we want to, you know, say that it's, we'll ask them to be nice, I think there has to be some type of hard line that needs to be respected, and I really want to see, especially up in, you know, towards the Twenty Seven Arts on the, right next to the camp. You know, these are kids, these are kids, and there's, I think there really needs to be some, some hard line protection for, but I mean, because they, they brought this element to the, into the neighborhood, and that's great, it's fine, but they're also bringing an element of danger to our, you know, there's liability brought to us that we, that we should not have to incur, incur that.
Well, we'll have to see what, what options are available to the town and go from there. We can't, we're not going to, you know, we're going to have to research what's available to the town. I do see, there is one hand up on the, on the computer.
Hi, it's me, it's Rebecca Wallen. I just have to say, most camps, the only good one is, is, they're certified by a camp association, so I really wouldn't worry about that. Plus, if anyone gets hurt there, it's not the town's responsibility. If I get food poisoning from the roadside cafe, that doesn't mean the town of Monterey is going to be sued. I mean, so it's someone's responsibility, and they are always at Lake, it's like everybody else that's on that road, and you need to deal with the camp and the town, it's not the business. It's like the stores. You know, I would suggest you talk to Great Barrington and Stockbridge, they've had camps there for years and years, the Christian is here for years and years. I'm sure there's policies in place, but the town is not responsible for private business because we don't like
James?
There are restrictions.
We have to
We have limitation to behavior with the conservation committee and other committees. The town does participate in limiting behavior and preventing behavior and holding people accountable.
So
So I think there's
James, well, that's exactly, that's exactly where we're headed. Like I said, we, we appreciate input from everybody. It is now our, we have to research what's available, what options are available to the town.
Thank you.
And go from there. We can't, we're not going to make any decisions tonight without doing further research, and we are going to keep up on this issue, speak to the owner, hopefully try and resolve things in as neighborly of ways as possible, and research all the options that are available. But there's not, that's the only way we can move forward.
Thank you.
Roz?
Are they allowed to do any work or construction on any of the buildings or add any buildings without a building permit?
Not that I'm aware of. I think they'd be subject to building permits.
Certain repairs are considered ordinary repairs in the Mass code that may fall under the jurisdiction of no permit needed. Anything structural, any penetration that changes, and when I say structural, the changing of a doorway perhaps to enlarge a door, where there would be a lintel or a header over it would have to be an inspection. Seeing as it's a seasonal issue, there's probably no insulative issues as far as making certain that the buildings are encapsulated properly, like, like the new stretch code is for our own homes. But I'm, I'm going to talk with Don and find out precisely what he as the zoning enforcement agent and also as the permitting agent for the inspections in the spring for all of these camps has to say about this. And he may be, he's going to be my initial contact with this, because he may have some other avenue that we're not aware of, at least in making certain that making certain that things are licensed for after season, that things are insured, things are inspected, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So as Justin had said, the awareness has been planted. Now it's up to us to do some digging and searching. And at some point, we will respond to everybody and then probably invite Kamana here for a meeting. If they don't show, that's their prerogative, but at least we can then maybe draft a letter to them. Stating just exactly pretty much what, what we've just heard.
I think it might be a good idea
Yeah.
to have somebody in the town count the number of buildings that are there. So no one's still.
We would know our, our, um,
Assessors.
assessors have an exact count.
Okay.
Um, aerial as well. So it's not like they're gonna sneak in an extra building here or there because the next time they were inspected, it would be caught and then of course, they could possibly run the risk of being made to remove the building if they're on respect.
Right.
Um, I don't, I hope there's no shady business going on and I doubt it. Uh, but let us do our job now.
Okay.
And.
Yeah, marriage.
It's just very simple. In the research like we'll be doing, are you also going to, um, will that include, um, whether they have the right to get permits for the winter or a contract?
Yes, I mean, what we're, what we have to set out to do is take all the concerns from the neighbors and see what's even available to the town to do in a situation like this. And then out of what's available, what makes sense to them, uh, whether it's permitting, ordinances, whatever it may be. Um, but we have to, uh, get a sense first of what's available to us. This is, as many camps as we have, for the most part, uh, at least in the past couple of years, we haven't heard many concerns about them. I think they kind of come and go in waves. Sometimes with changes of ownership. So hopefully we will smooth things out.
We do, we do have a history of similar grievances that were bestowed upon us when you moved to town. So, so it isn't like this is all blatantly new. So I think that looking back as to the same set of problems, how did we address them?
That's smart.
And, uh, you know, why reinvent the wheel if we don't have to? If certain things worked, then let's try to implement again.
If they didn't work, yeah.
Right.
Thank you for this time.
Yeah, thank you for joining us.
Thanks for joining.
Um, we are going to move on to our next item of business, which is a story.
Yep.
MacArthur, we asked to meet you. Thank you for joining us. So we are running a couple of minutes late. If you wanna join us at a seat like Terry, you're welcome to stay.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Yeah, and thanks for coming.
Thank you very much. Bye now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Lori.
Hi.
So we have been advertising for our select board secretary and we received your resume. And appreciate the interest. Um, would you like to present at all first why you're, you're interested in the position and then we can get into questions that we have for you?
Uh, sure. Um, so I, uh, have just been, I don't know, I've been trying to switch gears a little bit. Um, I come from a landscaping gardening background and starting to get some things. So I thought, um, I did enjoy, um, like office work. I really like typing, um, all that sort of stuff. Um, I do work now full-time as a therapist. Again, I'm back in the field. Um, but I thought it would be interesting to just get my foot in the door with one of the towns and things like that. Um, and just try to, I don't know, try something different, but something that I still enjoy doing. And then at the same time, I can learn a lot more about, um, like what you guys are talking about in here, codes and regulations and things like that, which, um, I'm in the process of buying a house, so all this is fantastic too. So I just.
Where are you working as a therapist now?
Um, it's ALC. It's Alternative Living Center. Um, I'm an addiction counselor.
So, and just to go over and you probably seen the job description, but the basic, uh, responsibilities that we're looking for is for someone to head up minutes from each meeting, which will free up the town administrator, um, to be more present at the meeting. And, and, um, basically minutes just are the official record of the meeting with, uh, any, you know, discussion points and votes that are taken or decisions that are made. Uh, one thing that I was interested in your resume is when you've been a counselor, uh, sometimes are you writing kind of recaps or reviews of, uh, sessions that you do?
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
I do that. And then I also, um, do intakes. So I interview people start to finish, history, um, substance use, medical, psychiatric. So I go through like the whole kit and boodle and then I have to write up the entire summary of the process.
How's your typing skills?
I think I'm fairly fast. Um, I would say I'm pretty quick, but.
Do you have computer skills?
Um, I think extremely familiar with Word, Excel, um, PowerPoint. Um, not as much as Access, but I don't know how much that's used as much click anymore. I actually, um, have been on the road for my dissertation. I'm on a break. But, um, that right there, I would hopefully say like how much typing I've used. I did a master thesis. Um, so lots of typing.
Do you mind sharing what your dissertation is about?
Sure. So it was about, um, so the first one I did or started was about, um, burnout in counselors. And then I realized I was burnt out. So I stepped out, stepped away for the last few years and I've been, um, starting to look into the research again and try to get back into it. And I might, maybe I'll just like work off of a case study from self-experience.
And what are the hours that you're thinking?
So we have.
Been so long since.
Yeah.
Yeah, that I know.
Yeah, one thing is that we've budgeted for up to six hours per week. But this is a new position that we're starting, you know, for the first time. Um, or the first time in the autumn. And our meetings vary, uh, we have regular meetings noon on the first Wednesday each month and then six P M. Every Wednesday after that. So whether there's three or four Wednesdays. And occasionally we take a week off for meeting. Um, we think, I think when we were back, when we were budging this position, we thought six hours because meetings can take two to three hours and it takes some time to clean up. Minutes and, and depending on, on, on how you're doing them. But it might be the type of position where we work through it to get a sense of what hours are required, required. Um, and we also have a little bit of flexibility since we're not beginning this position at the beginning of the fiscal year. So if you find out, you know, taking, doing the job takes seven hours a week. Um, is that kind of, I think, and I may have explained this, well, we talked about the nighttime meetings by email, we're scheduling this, but that's kind of the general timeframe is about, you know, you were here around five forty-five or a little bit earlier to get the things set up or and start, you know, get ready to take minutes and then the meetings, you know, run from an hour and a half, two hours, two and a half hours.
Three hours and forty minutes.
Yeah, there was a three hour and forty minute meeting last week. Um, that's very unusual.
Let's hope it's.
Um. So, and then it may take a little time outside of that meeting, depending how you work, depending what the board requires. I think one thing that we're doing now, and it'd be a question of the whole board, but one thing that we're doing now is we're posting the videos to YouTube. So, uh, you know, minutes, there's some flexibility as to how much detail they go into or not. And we have to work that out as to what, uh, works for us.
Um, are we envisioning that our secretary would like post the YouTube, post the minutes, post the agenda, all of that, right?
The agenda not, uh, not, uh, Melissa and I were going to continue to post the agenda as town administrator and chair of the board.
I have no problem. The way it's been happening, I just wanna be clear about what we're envisioning that's on.
Yeah. Um, right now, the job description is as follows. Prepare and submit to the select board draft minutes for each select board meeting. Attend meetings of the select board or in some instances, use the video audio recording of meetings to draft the minutes. So if we had a routine schedule, but something came up and you couldn't attend one meeting, we could have a video of it to draft minutes off of. Um, record the meetings, which the program that we use called Go To Meeting pretty much records the meeting, but and then post, making sure it gets posted to the town's YouTube channel. And then additional duties as assigned by the select board. Um, so.
Are we envisioning, I, I know we've talked about at times that the secretary could be responsible for when there's letters and stuff, but or like it's been the town administrator because she's, wears every hat. But, um, I'm just, I, you know, we're just, we're feeling it out as you said, and I'm just trying to get the lay of the land. It's not like we've issued a ton of those. So maybe it, it's not a huge thing, but I just thought I'd bring it up because it happens that tonight or soon. So.
So one, one thing that we do and may or may not, you know, depending on how, how things play out, uh, is we, you know, have letters come from the board and potentially, you know, drafting minutes might involve helping edit letters. Most, speaking to your, you know, computer programs, Word is what we do. Ninety-nine percent of our minutes and everything. There might be the occasional Excel sheet, uh, but it sounds like you're familiar with both, both those programs.
What about joint meetings?
Joint meetings. So while it's interesting because we have the new office assistant who is doing draft minutes for the planning board, finance committee and com, com. So it might be a situation where we have to, or see who's available.
Well, technically you guys would each have your own set of minutes, so.
Technically.
God. Right now, Michelle is just using mine when we have a meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, yeah, and there are occasionally irregular, irregular meetings, um, for different reasons. Uh, if we have a topic that is gonna require a full meeting about and we kind of work out the scheduling with that ourselves and we would with you. Is there anything else that you can think of that?
I don't think so. I, I'm surprised you wanna take on more if you're working full-time as a therapist, but I, I guess it could be helpful to have something that's totally out of that box.
Would be therapy.
Yeah, it could be therapeutic to do something totally.
I, I do garden on the side too and then, but that's ending. It's winter time soon. I don't, I know that's like a cuss word to a lot of people. But, uh, but yeah, so my season's ending and, um, what I'm doing is at my current job, I'm switching over and I'm gonna be doing Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, plus Wednesdays. Free.
Okay.
Which is kinda good.
Yes, very. Um, one thing, I don't think that we've gotten from you yet is, um, references.
Okay.
Um, so if you could please follow up and send them to me because we've been emailing about scheduling. Yeah.
Okay.
And then I'll pass them along. Um, but we have your resume and any other questions? Thank you for joining us. Yeah.
Thank you for having me.
Do you have any other questions you wanna ask us?
Um, I don't think so. I think the only thing would be if, um, if we'd like move forward. Um, I would just wanna see how things are traditionally presented and written out, just so I can have an idea of how you like it.
That it, it would be relatively easy to do that for yourself tonight by just going on a MontereyMA.gov. And, um, on the select board page on the right-hand side, you'll find our agendas and, um, recent meeting minutes. And there's actually a, a log where you can go back. I, I urge you not to, but you could go back. It's a, a long way. There's a lot of minutes out there. Um, and like if you wanted to, yeah, well, tonight, but you could also look into YouTube. Just, you know, brew some coffee. Tea, whatever your stipulation choices.
And if, if you're interested to, you know, each town, some towns are really behind on their minutes. But each town kind of has their own style with the board, you know, and, and the administrative system or whoever is drafting the minutes kind of adopt. And, uh, I think the way that we've been doing it is good, but you know.
Subject to change.
Yeah. Um, cause there, it seems like a very simple, or not simple, but because I, sometimes I've had to draft minutes and it takes way longer than I thought it would. Um, there's, it's, it can include more or less and there's, well, here's one thing to mention. So the open meeting law is a law in Massachusetts that, are you familiar with it at all?
I am not.
So it is a law that pertains to the select board because we are a public body. And one of the requirements of the open meeting law is that we need to publish or approve a set of minutes of each of our meetings. Uh, either three meetings after that meeting or thirty days, whichever comes later. And based on our schedule, the thirty days almost always comes later. So usually we try and keep, you know, up with the last week or two. But occasionally, you know, okay, we're running up against the deadline, uh, we have to approve a set of minutes. And, uh, is this the open meeting law? I agree with that. And so then the other thing about the open meeting law is there are requirements about the minutes that they need to contain.
Page nine.
Yes. Has the exact requirements, um, which you'll also see in our minutes if you look on our account website. So it's, you know, the members who are present or absent in those kinds of time.
A lot of details like that, but also the idea is that there should be enough detail that if someone wanted to know what friends hired, they could get the majority of the content by reading the minutes. It's not the same as every word that we spoke in clearly, but you know, saying something like, they discussed this. Wouldn't be enough. Right, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, do you, are you giving it away? Or do you wanna pack?
Uh, no, I've had it for numerous years. We're familiar with it. Uh.
Gotcha.
Yeah, you're more than welcome to bring it back with you.
Thank you.
Or you're more than welcome to carry it with you.
So that, and that's, you know, we, we do minutes.
Fantastic reading.
We do minutes. It, it's good, but we're also required by the law, by law to do minutes. It's not, we don't have the choice, uh, about whether or not to do minutes. So. Right. That's all you can.
Yes.
Thank you. And we'll.
If you do come up with questions, yeah, email Justin and either he can answer or more of us can.
Yeah. And we will, I'll look for the references from you. And we'll probably follow up next week after our meeting.
Okay.
Which is another six ten meeting. Um, and let you know.
Yeah, I'll send you the references tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Great for joining.
Thank you so much for having me. Thanks for coming on.
Great to meet you. And you as well. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Bye.
Thank you. You as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, everybody.
So we, that is our two meetings.
Yeah.
We will jump right into old business. I do want to acknowledge that, um, Donna, town council, reached out to me today. Um, about a personnel issue and she wanted to discuss scheduling and, uh, posting requirements. So without, got one thing that she reminded me was that anytime that we are to discuss complaints or charges, discipline or dismissal of a town employee, um, we need to provide that employee with forty-eight hours of notice. Um, and also that she's available to help with anything like that. So we can't, you know, she said it's your goddess chair to, um, eliminate any discussion of complaints or charges against a employer or discipline or dismissal of employee um, at a meeting where it's not properly hosted. Um, but that being said, let me know if you would like to schedule Donna or put something on the agenda for an executive session next week or anytime in the future.
I have a peculiar question. I know that, what happens if we do it in an open meeting?
So the way that Donna explained it to me today is that. So, the way that Donna explained it to me today is that so sometimes the board can choose whether or not to go into executive session, but the way that she explained to me today was that if you're discussing uh, complaints or charges against a town employee, discipline or dismissal of a town employee, you, we are legally required to provide forty-eight hours' notice at that point and offer in an executive session. At that point, the employee has the right to request that the matter be heard in open meeting, uh, rather than executive session, if it is an executive session, they have right to bring someone with them as a, as a counselor, who is not necessarily allowed to speak, unless the chair decides that that person you allow to speak. And, I mean, there's just an invitation, they don't have to attend.
Of course, but you have to extend it.
But you have to extend it, and.
And would administrate, I would assume administratively would be on the list of, cause it wasn't specifically listed in the four things you listed, but I'm assuming that that would also be included in yours, or did you not mention it?
Um, I, I don't, don't, don't quote me on that.
Okay.
The, the, the way, the, what I'm familiar with, and this is also the way that Brian Mazer used to put it when he was our lawyer from KP Law. If you're discussing, uh, complaints or charges against an employee, discipline or dismissal of employee, uh, we should require, uh, we should extend the invitation to meet in an executive session, at which point they have the right to request if in open meeting, have the person present, or not. Um, but, like I said, if, so, I wouldn't, I'm going to shut down any conversation that tends in that direction tonight, or that, you know, if I determine.
You don't wanna have it, you got a meeting, but we may have to discuss whether we want to have a special meeting.
Yeah, we're not gonna. Yes.
And I would suggest that we do so. So the question would be the timing of the meeting, whether it should be, I mean, it would have to be la- later than seven o'clock on Friday or Monday.
On Friday.
Forty-eight hours.
Minimal time, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Correct.
I think it's, um, I would suggest that we do it if such a meeting is our next Wednesday, so that it can be properly posted and noticed without any, you know, that gives time without, you know,
Okay.
pushing things off too far, but that gets until Monday, um.
And while, yeah. Okay. Um.
And then also Donna said, obviously, as always, she's, uh, available to make herself available, um, and.
Did she have any, uh, any thing, does that, would that include issues concerning the failure of the court to begin a new hours?
Um, I think that could, so one thing that's going to happen is that we have an open session on the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Um, town clerk proposed office hour schedule, so we are going to deliberate on that, unless for some reason two members of the board don't want to deliberate on that.
Right.
And, and, um, hopefully make a decision, um, but like I said, you know, if there's anything regarding those charges or complaints, discipline or dismissal, then
Okay.
then we should follow the posting requirements, and Donna will aid the chair in posting that and noticing that to make sure that everything is done appropriately, but that discussion's not happening tonight, yeah.
Right, okay, so I, um, I have.
I mean, for any, and this goes, this goes for.
For posting purposes, I think we need to do that next Wednesday, given all that has occurred.
Yeah.
Um, I think we should definitely have Donna help us, I think we should, uh, ask the clerk, notify the court that we will be discussing it, and give her the opportunity to come. Should she wish so, um, I, I really don't think we have a lot of other recourse, and I think we have to act.
Yeah, so, um, and this also goes for any time, I know that the chair is responsible for posting a meeting, but if ever you want Donna's presence at a meeting, or, um, or want an executive session item, just like you want any item, just let me know when Melissa knows.
Well, this, this is the first one that's arisen, so.
Um, but I just, she, she reached out in response to the human resource director, reached out to her about a personnel issue. And so we talked on the phone, and then while she was on the phone, I caught her here on something that we talked about last week, about the, uh, about the uh, bill from Jeremiah Pollard, uh, but.
But, so when we get to that, you can tell us what video.
But basically just that if we want to discuss those items, can't do it tonight, based on the posting.
Okay.
Um, but we can accommodate future.
So, let's do it next Wednesday. And, you know, set the time as you always do in accordance with what she can, uh, Donna
Yeah.
uh, can do, and, and then we'll notify, uh, the court of practice.
Alright, so, old business number one, draft town meeting warrant, so there's the two items of tree work, while they're here, I know I had posted the group, uh, article for um, the Monterey News later in the agenda, but why don't we move it forward if there's no objection to earlier, so this is sixteen D, the other thing.
Did I, did I send you my edits to that, or do I just have my computer, or did sixteen D?
The other thing.
Melissa. Did you hear me? I got a very short article from you.
No, no, I, I made edits to that as well, but I'll just pull it on my computer if it's not on.
Um, the other thing is that we have until next week to finalize this. One thing I wanted to ask about the tree work, Melissa, as I was, um, as I was reviewing the Excel spreadsheet that Jim prepared, I realized that there was a uh, item for a log truck that was after the fifteen, twenty-five-six for each community center and um, Bidwell Park, that, um, that Jim had put, that Jim had put in the spreadsheet, and then when I took out the twenty-five-six or whoever did that, we looked at, okay, Bidwell Park twenty-five-six, Community Center twenty-five-six, but is that log truck gonna be an additional cost, I just wanna make sure that. Can we double check with Jim, I guess that those are the right numbers?
Oh, I see, so you're asking eight hundred times two.
The log truck, eight hundred times two. Is, is this what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Log truck, eight hundred times two.
Yeah, because it, it seems like that maybe, um, and then also Jim had an allowance, um, you know, depending on how it work. Goes, he built an allowance to the, um, what was it, a five?
Yeah, ten percent allowance.
Ten percent allowance, um, which is not included in these numbers.
Right.
Um, but all I did was lay out the situation, Bidwell Park, the community center, said the estimates are based from the uh, our contract with John W. Field Tree Service, and then that we don't believe that we have any money in our budget currently for these items.
And I, like, it's just editorial stuff. Nothing, I mean, nothing really substantive, just moving a few things around and tightening it up to get it shorter.
Yeah. Uh, and, um, I also wanna run it by Jim, of course, before we, um,
Finalize it.
finalize it. But we have until next week. Um, based on the deadline for the Monterey News.
Do you want me to send that to you so you can merge it all together?
Yeah.
And it, but, you know, he, it, he wrote it, so if you, if he doesn't wanna take my edit, you're not gonna take my edits.
Well, I'm hoping it's signed, the board can sign off on it next week.
So, I, I agree.
Is there any more discussion about that?
I'm just concerned about using the free cash for this without
Hmm.
without really knowing where we're heading with budget and pilot monies and everything else that's gonna come in.
Mm-hmm.
If we, you know, fifty grand. Is that gonna take place this fall, let me know?
If it were to get approved, that special town meeting, we need to double check with John Field and Jim, but I think that's the understanding.
They can even get to it this fall.
Yeah. We can ask that, that's a good question, yeah.
If they can't get to it till spring, perhaps we should try to maintain the resource of free cash until it's whether they're mandated.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's a good point, if, if, uh, Field and, and Jim, they said that he's not gonna be able to do the work till the spring, even if we have the money in October, we might as well put it on the annual town meeting, once we can make a better plan.
Yeah, if that extra fifty could come in handy.
Um, I guess the only, the only counterpoint is that the work at the, at Bidwell Park is gonna need to be done regardless, right, I guess the question of where the money comes from, but the park's gonna remain closed until the work gets done. And no one wants that also.
Need to repair itself, right.
No one wants that, um.
I mean, I, it, it seems to be more and more that the, that the Monterey Community Center work could wait. Um, so we did, if we take that one off, it reduces the amount substantially, um, although that, it might be a little higher a little bit, the log for the park.
And then just put it on the warrant, yeah, and then put it on the warrant for the spring.
For, for the spring, yeah, um, I mean, I think that would, that substantiate half the amount, right?
Yeah.
Um, right off the bat, so I, I think it makes it more, approachable is the wrong word, but.
Well, it's more tolerable.
Yes, and, um, I, I didn't realize that we were gonna try to restock for storm damage, um, line item.
Beautiful.
But it makes a lot of sense.
So, and yeah, we had, we had this discussion, right, because and we want a clearer plan going forward, the park commission, the park commission isn't gonna have money to take, you know, clean up down trees at its parks, because its budget is like four days' worth of tree work.
Right.
The whole general budget.
Yeah, it, it's a lot.
The community center operates on revolving fund, and, you know, if there's trees down at town hall, or the library, or X, Y, and Z, we, we talked about maybe adding all the money for tree cleanup, being the storm damage budget. And that's certainly how we're organizing it in this, or at least how I wrote up this, um, this article. Um, especially if they're not gonna be able to do it till this spring, it probably doesn't make any sense, especially for the community center to, um, do it, to try and get the money now.
Yeah, I mean, he may not be able to do the Bidwell Park till then either.
But we don't, but we don't know that.
That's great, no, so that's, that's the second question that's asked, we asked Jim his opinion, give the information on the truck.
Good.
And then we need to have, um, John Field notified and ask him what his timeframe.
So, I guess we'll have, we'll go, we'll ask those questions of Jim Hunt and Fields, and get a better sense
Yeah.
um, of what we wanna ask for on the special town meeting warrant, if anything, um.
And then you think that, that the, uh, well, the, um, subaccount called storm damage within the highway operations account next year will need to be funded on the line item, or is it right now?
So it's within.
Line item, or is it just within one of their subcategories?
It's within highway operations, which is a pretty large account, but the idea being.
But it's not very large, when you think about two, two locations, jumping down fifty grand.
Yeah.
How do you plan on that?
How do you plan on free storm, right in the first two weeks of this year?
Well, it's also kinda like, it's like us always putting fifty thousand in stabilization.
Yep.
So, maybe something like stabilization should be looked at occasionally for things like this.
Yeah.
If it's a funding.
And we did talk about using stabilization for it, but, and, but then we just need to come back at the next time meeting and then fill stabilization, so.
Like, that's another. Oh, yeah.
Right.
One pocket at the other, it's still gotta be paid for.
But one doesn't actually.
Just a question of when.
Or to the tax fix.
It would next year.
Well, the fifty, whatever is put into it, yes.
Well, and I guess the point being too, whatever we don't spend in free cash, and we don't leave in free cash, we've typically been using to offset the tax rate. But, we've kind of agreed that if we're gonna spend money on stabilization, we're gonna put at least that much back in at the annual town meeting, so.
So it's one pocket or the other, in the end, the money's gotta be spent to fix the trees now or later, from one funder from another.
That's correct.
So, we will figure out and answer those questions, and then go from there, because obviously this article's not gonna go in the Monterey News or anywhere if we decide to not ask for the money at the community center, and if we decide to ask for no money at all.
Right.
That, at this time.
Or are you going with just that understanding, because this is why we didn't do it, or did do it, it's whether.
Right, yeah. Right. It's funny, and, you know, as of this moment, I'm kind of applying on, on the whole, having talked to various people to say maybe we should put off the community center work, since it isn't imminent. Um, I think it's gonna need to be done, but it should be done next summer, after annual town meeting, set aside money for it. Um, and it gives us further chance to see if, if the storms continue to burn down branches, tops of trees, et cetera, it makes it that much more evident that the sand has to come down, if it behaves as predicted. Um, yeah, so.
Alright, so we'll work on that, the next one is the real reason for special town meeting, right, which is the unpaid bills.
Yep.
Um, so, and we.
Although, there's not a huge amount of money, so ironic.
So, we, uh, no, it's not huge, but there's a couple con- contractors that we need to pay for their services, because we dropped them all. Um, and it sounds like there is another small bill that rolled in recently.
The total was ten thousand one dollar and sixty-six cents.
Ten thousand one dollar and sixty-six cents. Okay, so we have those unpaid bills.
That's the total?
Yeah, well, almost certainly, you know, call a special town meeting for it. The next is the, the, the request from the regional school district planning board.
Can I, can I ask one question? I noticed that the elevator isn't on here, and I looked at the meeting minutes from last week, and apparently we agreed to ask the finance committee to move that from reserve funds, but we didn't discuss that last night's meeting, did we?
We did not discuss that last night, so last week, um, we, we talked, we'd been talking about the elevator quote upgrade for a while, and I had, I had suggested to Melissa, maybe that's a reserve fund transfer request
Okay.
item, and and Melissa filled out a reserve fund transfer request, and the finance committee approved it.
Oh, okay, so that did actually happen, okay, so they did it at the meeting before we were there?
Yeah. So the funds are. Not the meeting before we were there, there was a meeting after our four, three hour and forty minute meeting.
Yeah, I think it was the week before.
Wednesday before.
Okay, okay, the Wednesday before.
I. Yeah.
Okay, I didn't realize that that had happened, so great, thank you.
Um, so that is taken care of.
Cool.
Um, so yes, that's why it's no longer being considered. The fifteen thousand dollar request from the eight-town regional school district planning board, which I incorrectly, we put as committee on the agenda, sorry.
That's okay.
Um, but, we do, we agreed to ask other towns, we heard back from every town, although some haven't made decisions yet, we heard back from both school districts. And a couple.
We talked about this last night, but Scott wasn't there, so just to bring you up to speed, I talked to Rodney Wood from Sheffield.
Yeah.
Um, their select board voted two to one to go ahead and approve the money. Basically, they felt like we've come this far, we've spent this much money, we should try and see it out, but they were very clear that that would be it. There's going to be no more money, um, they encouraged them to do some grant applications to the state, and, um, they're using ARPA monies today.
So Sheffield's using what?
They're using what?
ARPA monies, so that's Sheffield.
So that's Sheffield, offered.
So no, no, no town meeting.
No town meeting.
Not for that, I don't think that's a lawful expense.
Um, offered, offered responded and said, the select board voted Monday night to put the article in the town special town meeting warrant, to take it from free cash. Um, we heard from Eggermont that they are putting on the special town meeting warrant on November fourteenth, but at the same time, a report is being made by Eggermont's, all three of their members of the school district planning board, not in support of the decision of the school district planning board, and how to move forward with the consolidation of the two districts. And then the last one that I got most recently, uh, makes possibly a very new outlook on the whole situation. The town administrator in New Marlboro wrote that the select board tabled the item on Monday evening because Tara White, who's a select board member, explained that according to Lucy Prashker, who's the chair of the regional school district planning board, there was potential funding in the supplemental Massachusetts budget, and the planning board was hoping it could get funding from that source. And I asked her, and all the towns were notified of this change, and she, she said Lucy would be sending a letter to the towns.
Hmm.
So.
So this, and, so basically, make sure I understand, it sounds like there might be money from the state to support their work that would preclude our having to do this at all.
No, the, the districts can have a different pocket of money, is that it?
No, this is from. No, this is from the town of New Marlboro, but this is according to Tara White, according to Lucy Prashker, and there's nothing official out on the app.
Three people according to according to.
Right, so Tara White is on the select board, but also sits on the planning board.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Is saying that Lucy is saying that there'd be money from the state to support. Is that, did I correctly encapsulate what you said, that that Tara said, that Lucy said?
Actually, Ma- Mari Enoch said that Tara White said that Lucy Prashker.
Okay. Okay.
But.
But now, is that for each town has that, um, chunk of money?
Yeah, I mean. So, no, no, the idea being that the school district planning board would just get the money from the state and wouldn't even go to the towns.
And where is that?
And it wouldn't come from the towns in any way, shape, or form. Um, but we don't have anything official on this yet. I would think that we would just postpone until we get some clarification on if.
That's true.
That's true, yeah. Um, and obviously, if they find the money elsewhere, then it's a moot point from our end.
Right, but we may need to proceed with deciding if we wanna, what we wanna do with it. Um, and we can always pull it off the warrant and say it's not done.
And just table it as a suggestion.
So, right, what I was gonna propose is to um, to put it on the warrant and let the voters decide. And I I said this last night at the finance committee meeting, I think um, the biggest reason to do that is to raise political awareness about the this process and how important it is and how involved people should be.
Yeah.
Um, and to do it now before they get hit with it anyway. Um, so I, that that's what I would put for it, and I would make a motion that we go ahead and put this on the warrant. It can, if we can take it off, but we can't put it back on once we write the warrant. Um, go ahead and put this request on the warrant and put it to voters, I mean, see what they say.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
So.
Do you wanna reword my motion to the board again?
No, I I I would, rather than put it on the warrant now, I wanna just learn what if Lucy, according to these people, Lucy is gonna be sending a letter to the towns, potentially mixing the whole thing.
Telling the voters, right, okay.
And I don't know that that's gonna happen, and like you said, if we already called the meeting and then we learned of this later, that's something, but um, I would rather wait to see, um.
Alright, amend my motion.
Okay.
How about, if if, wait, are we deciding to go forward with a special town meeting at the very least for the unpaid bills?
It depends, it depends what we hear, I mean, right, it depends what we hear back from John Field. It depends what we hear back from the regional school district planning board, if we hear back from the parks commission, and what Donna thinks about the bill from Jeremiah. Um, I'm not gonna, I guess, I'm not gonna worry too much about, let's just take each issue as its own, right?
But either we're having a special town meeting or we're not.
Yeah.
If we have, would we have a special town meeting for one item, just the one item?
If it was the right item, yeah, I think so.
Okay, so what would qualify, is there any of those items?
We've got a week, we've got a week, more.
Before we have the major decision.
Yes.
If, and we can always move it, you know, a couple weeks later and and or put it inside, there's no, you know.
Okay. I just don't wanna see us keep hunting this down the road till it gets so cold that, you know, he's willing to come to the meeting, because.
Well, there's no reason we can't put it in the, in the fire station if the fire station allows us to put it there.
Right, and they, but it, other than the fact that the moderator isn't happy about that.
So, yeah, but the select board calls the town meeting and then once town meeting begins, the moderator, right, runs the shuttle, but
Okay.
up until then, the select board, you know, signs the warrant and calls the meeting for the time and date and location.
Mm-hmm. Do we have anything from the fire chief about whether he's gone?
I have a text message right now.
Okay.
So I couldn't go dinner at your house that night when you tell your dad.
So, maybe somebody can enlighten me as to how the fire chief is willing or not willing to let us use fire pavilion for meetings that we've always paid for. Has that changed in the last six years?
No, it's just that since COVID, we've been putting them in the, in the pavilion.
But we haven't been fully. Pavilion, because of the air and the spacing.
Okay.
So, the question is if we go too late into the fall, it's gonna be cold. I'm not, I'm not worried about that, what I wanna figure out, what I wanna.
I'm not either, I was just, I was just thinking I, I'm hearing something different, that maybe a policy has changed.
Okay.
No.
No, I think it's just a lot of people are concerned about COVID.
Okay.
I'm concerned that if we do it indoors, especially with COVID numbers rising again, there's gonna be more people that are hesitant to come.
I understand, yeah, 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 yeah.
The colder it is, the harder it is for people, the fewer are gonna show. If we move it indoors, we have, we don't wanna be a spreading event.
I get you.
Yeah.
So, but let's.
I was thinking was.
Yeah, no.
A policy change, that's right.
No.
Let's, let's focus on uh, you know, these items. And yeah, I do think, you know, if we wanted fifteen thousand dollars for the pl- planning board, we'd have to call a special town meeting, right, unless we all thought it could come out of ARPA.
Yeah. Right.
Um.
Which I don't, I don't think it'd go for.
Uh, and what town is in November, you know, a special town meeting in November is not too late for that. If it's the tree work, it's a different story, but we're gonna ask the question of whether we're too late on that any.
For the.
Um, so, why don't we just continue to deal with each item individually? And then determine, you know, if next week we say we're not ready to call a special town meeting, or we we're, we don't wanna call one, or we wanna postpone, there's nothing official.
Okay, well, I'll just, so I'm on record as saying, I think that we should, if if, unless it gets rescinded by Prashner,
Yeah.
I think we should put it on the special town meeting.
I would agree, I just thought, oh, no.
And I, I'd all, if we need to do it, I'd almost have the special town meeting just for that because I think it's important to get people aware and tuned into this process, cuz it's a really big deal.
Yeah, it's been going on for so long.
Yeah, but i- in the background, and the fact that they have a website hasn't really tuned people into what's happening.
Wow.
So we'll, we'll get an update, get some clarification on whether the request for funding is still is still a request for funding.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I would have thought we would hear by now, but you never know. Um.
Any, any updates on the parks commission?
So, this is just a memo to the parks commission, we talked with the chair Steve Snyder last week, right? But this is just a draft memo to try and clarify, and I'll just read it.
That's true.
The select board has received the parks commission's request for additional funding in the amount of ten thousand dollars for renovating the green park ball field sent by Chair Steve Snyder. We consider this request our September seventh meeting and ask for the following additional information. Please provide us with an update on the funds in line six thirty park commission, which was allocated seventeen thousand eight hundred at town meeting. Out of these funds, how much has been spent already? Out of the remaining funds, how much is already allocated to projects and recurring expenses? Please list with as much detail as possible.
As possible, it's as possible.
Yeah. How much money out of this line could the parks commission reasonably contribute to the renovation of the ball field, if any? We could add if any.
I don't think we have to say it, but we're, we're asking to do it in kind, so they can say, yes.
I think they can, I think they can cough up a time, yeah.
Yeah.
Please provide us with an update on the estimates bids for this project, how much will the renovation of the ball field cost? Answer to these questions can help the select board determine how to help the parks commission. I keep on changing whatever plural I'm in. Will help the parks commission in its goal of renovating the ball field, whether it be through a special town meeting article, ARPA funds, or otherwise, please let us know if you have any questions.
Singular.
Park commission or parks commission, which one is it?
Park commission.
Park commission?
I think it's parks, cuz we have multiple parks.
I'm thinking like parks.
But it's certainly spelled different also.
It's singular, yeah, regardless of, parks, yeah.
Yeah. But in the line and the town, and the town meeting, whether it is parks.
Is anybody on this rule, so if we said park versus parks?
No.
Move on.
No, and there's.
I don't know what the bylaws is.
The, the sign.
It looks like it's parks one.
The sign down there says Parks and Recreation Committee, so. Um, are there.
I think it's, I think it's plural, parks.
Are there any changes we had, add, please list with as much detail as possible, Melissa? Yeah.
So there's, there's a, the first line of the second paragraph has parks that should be.
Park commissioners.
No.
Parks, park commissioners.
Town voted to elect a board of park commissioners.
Okay, so I guess it's park commission.
Okay, so where am I?
So then they are all, should be singular and not plural.
Park commission is all singular.
You what? Park.
I think it's a park.
I think it should be parks, but if that's what the bylaws says, I guess we're gonna stuck with it. Oh, yeah, there's another one, so there's.
Well, what about Mash General? Uh, okay, well, we want to.
Doesn't matter for this layer, but it would be good to know to fix it on the website.
We won't pick out in the details, yeah. And it's certainly not parks and recreation.
Park commissions, what else am I changing?
Um, it would, in parentheses, please list with as much detail possible.
Should be as possible. Just that one word added.
And then that's it. Um, otherwise, I would, you know, move for the board to sign off on this memo to the park commission.
Yep, second.
We'll call vote, uh, Susan.
Yes.
Scott.
C.
And Justin, yes, so we'll sign that when we get a clean copy.
Thanks for drafting it.
Nice job. Um, and then we'll hear back, so if they say we need five thousand dollars or two thousand, then we'll decide whether we're gonna make a vote. The next is a memo to the conservation commission clarifying what we discussed last week, I'll read it, it's fairly short. The select board has received the conservation commission's request for additional funding for the agent position sent by then Chair Chris Blair. We consider this request at our September seventh meeting and offer the following guidance. The board requests that the commission review the town's application fees and consider increasing the fees.
It should say consider, it says considering.
Yeah, and consider increasing the fees in order to offset increased costs of postage, advertising, and the commission's agent. The commission might start by comparing Monterey's fees to those of surrounding towns. The board recommends that the commission continue to utilize the agent as necessary to complete the essential work of the commission and pay the agent out of the appropriate revolving funds. If the increased fees do not fully cover the costs of administrative items and the agent, it is the board's understanding based on guidance from the town accountant that the revolving account can legally be spent below zero dollars. Please continue to pay the agent as necessary to make sure that all work is properly completed. During the budgeting process for the annual town meeting, the commission and the board should reassess the situation to determine if additional funds are required to fund the agent position beyond those collected by fees. Should additional funds be required, a transfer may be made to the revolving funds to cover any deficits at the annual town meeting in May. The board finds this approach to be sus- superior to funding the agent at an upcoming special town meeting because it will allow the town to have a better understanding of the funds necessary to pay an agent over a longer timeframe in the current arrangement. Please let us know if you have any questions.
Alright, that looks good, thanks for drafting that.
Alright, yeah, that's good.
Um, I did run into Noel, um, Wiki, who's current serving chair of the.
Oh, is she there?
Yeah, um, today and um, talked to her about what we had discussed and I did let her know that I, I did, I know that now Kim, whether or not the agent has given us some research on other towns' fees. I personally checked her grade Barrington and Sheffield. Uh, Sheffield's charging one fifty for an RDA and Barrington's currently charging one twenty, but it's about to go up to one fifty. So I urge them to consider at least raising it to one fifty. Um, since that, you know, that seems to be the going rate and I don't think it's an unreasonable burden.
I'm one, we're all answering for that.
Marlboro doesn't have an agent.
No, they don't have an agent.
But they have a fee hanging on the name.
Yeah. But that, I mean, I guess, maybe it's unrelated.
Yeah, two year plus.
There's two letters.
Two different letters.
I'm sorry, yes, you're correct.
Alright, so we'll, I will move that we will send this memo to the con, um, and we'll vote. Susan.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
And Justin, yes, so we'll sign.
I'm gonna ask you when you send you below or.
Above.
Yes. You forwarded those, those things from, um, Kim, do you remember what the, uh, what, like, I have so many. Do you remember what the gray line was? No. Huh? Towns of Middlefees? Okay, that was it.
No. Not, not fully doing, but you need to speak to them.
Yeah, there we go. I'm sure you get to something I fully can make it open my mouth on.
We got, Beckett, yeah.
Oh, I just, if I don't write, I don't listen. So I do too much of this kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Kenny, Kenny just said that the other day, I doodle all the time.
Um, and answer to your question, Beckett, uh, is seventy-five for RDA, one twenty-five.
I think that was something that was interesting.
Otis is seventy-five, Hinsdale is a hundred, Barrington, she has it at one twenty-five. When I talked to them on phone the other day, they said one twenty, but they're about to raise it. Lee is one oh-five and Richmond is one fifty.
Is that the only fee I, I've had?
No, there's a bunch of others, but the RDA is one of the ones that goes directly to us, whereas like the NOI has this very complicated formula
Formula, yeah.
and a bunch of it goes to state and some of it goes to us, but we have a lot less
A lot less.
control over that one, whereas the RDA is just Lisa said it. So, um, there's a bunch of other ones, OCC, there's an ANRAD, I, I don't know. A bunch of the towns, however, do have appropriations from the town. Beckett, Otis, Hinsdale, Barrington, well, I'm wondering, all of these do, and I'm wondering if that's why she chose these towns because there's a lot of towns that are on here, so.
Interesting. So, that takes care of those two items. If we hear back from the park commission and we wanna put them in a special town meeting warrant, we could, it could be a possible ARPA item. Let's wait till we hear back, cuz we can't do anything if we don't know how much money they need.
That was for parks, and we were just on that con.
Yeah. And we, and we, and we settled con, con, you know, more or less for now.
Yeah.
Um, the bill from Pa- from Jeremiah Pollard for the Hume lawsuit appeal. So Donna reached out to me like this afternoon, I was on the road, but I uh, had a quick phone call with her about scheduling executive session and um, and then I, she was on the line and I just, cuz we had talked about reaching out to her last week. And so I said, I explained briefly the situation to her and said, what do you think? And she said the town probably, based on the way I described it, probably has a case uh, to, that we're not obligated to pay the full bill, uh, given it's, uh, how high it was over the estimate and if we explained that we were, uh, limited, had limited funding. Um, I asked, she said, send me what you have in writing, I said, I don't think there's a lot in writing, but would a transcript, you know, could that count, and she said yes. So, the next step I'm going to do is transcribe key section parts of that meeting where we hired uh, Jeremiah Pollard and send them to her and she's gonna get back to me. But she said a transcript of a video and like the video itself is, is, is uh, is sufficient, depending. And like I said, it's been months, I haven't really been back to comb through the footage. Um, but I'll just send the first, that transcript or what I think is the most important to her and then she'll, she'll tell us whether or not she thinks we're obligated to pay.
I would definitely be cautious of the transcript that's the auto transcripts, because it's a disaster.
No, I will make my own. And I'll make my own, and I don't think it's gonna be long, because there was a couple of D.
I don't think it should be long, once you find the spine, it won't be bad, it's getting there because there's a lot of them, that's all.
Yeah. Um, basically, were we clear that we had a limited budget? If we were, we probably can stick to that budget. Um.
I don't, I, I think you were clear that that was limited, I'm not sure that you put a number on it.
Yeah, so I'll run that, whatever we did say, I'll run that by Donna and she'll get back to us. The next item is town clerk proposed office hours schedule. Um, number six. So, at two weeks ago, right? Does it, I sent it to her the next morning? September one, yeah, so two weeks, at our meeting two weeks ago, we sent a letter to the town clerk. We, there had already been some back and forth, but requesting a schedule of Wednesday, Friday, Saturday. And two point seven five discretionary hours. I'll, I'll, I'll read out the exact, so we're not. The select board said, after due deliberation, we would like you to begin the work schedules outlined below. The clerk's new hours will be Wednesday, ten AM to six thirty PM, Friday, twelve PM to four thirty PM, Saturday, nine thirty AM to one thirty PM, and two point seven five discretionary hours. Um, which was a letter that we all signed off on. Um, the clerk responded on September eighth, so just after our meeting last week, or the next day after our meeting last week, and said, again, thanks for the board of selectmen proposal for my new hours. As originally requested by the board of selectmen, my proposal is for working two non-consecutive workdays and eliminating discretionary hours. Please contact my attorney if you have any questions or concerns. My proposal is Wednesday, ten AM to seven PM, which is nine hours. Friday, nine AM to seven forty-five PM, which is ten point seven five hours, no discretionary hours. Saturday hours by appointment only.
Which I'll point out, two weeks have hours to give.
I know, and so that's one thing, I think as we decide the town clerk's schedule or decide, you know, how we wanna move forward, we had agreed, we actually had requested originally no discretionary hours, which this fulfills. So this actually does fulfill all the requirements of the initial.
Which originally the proposal didn't, but we did point out that there's a problem with that. So we either have to take off Saturday discretionary, Saturday hours at all.
Yeah.
If we allow this. But I wanna point out a couple of things. First of all, our letter also stipulated that those hours should start this week. I was here at ten thirty today, the clerk was not in today. Um she did not say anything in her response regarding when she planned to start those hours. Nor did she respond to our request that she start it. The only thing she does say is that she can't meet with us until October twelfth, despite the fact that she would have Wednesday hours. I'd like to point out that if my boss asked to meet with me and I said, I can meet with you in five weeks, I would be on the street. There's no boss that I can think of that would say a five-week wait to meet with an employee is acceptable.
Yeah, so let's focus on the, that certainly.
If you wish, I'm just raising a response to the letter.
I think, yes. Yeah, so let's focus on town clerk hours going forward.
I don't think it's acceptable.
So we had agreed.
I I was, I expected those hours to start this week. I am focusing on that.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so what what I'm saying is is now, what what would the board like to do? Uh Terry had proposed a Wednesday, Friday schedule. The board had requested a Wednesday, Friday, Saturday schedule. Terry responded with a Wednesday, Friday schedule. Um there's a question of discretionary hours. Um I think we should have discretionary hours. I think uh as we discussed last week.
We are reversing ourselves, but that happens.
Um so.
We're trying to work out a policy and we originally, I don't think it was a bad thought to eliminate the discretionary hours, but if we're putting them back in, if we want Saturday hours, I I still think we should have fewer Saturday hours. I don't think it should be discretionary.
Yeah, so but if we want any appointments allowed, then there has to be some discretionary.
It is, right.
So what if we took some hours off of Wednesday or Friday? Out of these hours, because we're actually, and these hours do fulfill the business day request that we had asked for most hours during the business day. So what if we?
Well, actually, technically, that would be uh two and uh four and almost five hours, and so a quarter of her hours would be after hours.
I think.
So they do, but they don't.
So moving forward, what if we were to take these hours and take two point seven five off somewhere and say that that is the town clerk's schedule going forward?
Taking from Friday. That's a long day to work.
That's a long day to work. Um and my my only hesitation would be that Donna did advise us to create hours that were the hours we wanted the clerk to work, no matter who was clerk.
Yeah.
And it like, all the meetings I was been listening to before I was on the board and since I was, there was a lot of support for Saturday hours. Um I I don't have an opinion, because I can be there Monday to Friday for my own personal use. But if there is a strong feeling that the second homeowner should have access on Saturday, then we should have hours on Saturday. And I like, so I I don't have a strong personal opinion, other than if everybody, if there's so much, we should have Saturday hours, then we should have Saturday hours and they shouldn't be discretionary, especially because we're gonna have to have those for polling hours anyway. Maybe that's only once or twice a year, I grant you, but.
You're gonna need more than two point seven five for polling.
Yes, you need four.
Four, right, so.
So.
Which is what we had put on there.
Yeah.
I know. And there's been a lot of talk, I mean, going back probably to when you were on, it's like we're about Saturday, town hall, open, people around.
Yeah.
But and I know that it's not something that we've always achieved. Um I do think that we can have hours that work for the town, that don't have Saturday hours. I think Saturday hours would be great, but I think that we could certainly have, you know, this accommodates night and day, specifically fulfilling a day request. Maybe we could take the hours off of, whether we feel this schedule is day-heavy or night-heavy, off of that and make those discretionary.
And just, so you're just saying trim trim it to put back the discretionary hours and leave it, making?
Oh, my my only thought looking at this, having its town clerk work at least some of the time that the select board is meeting, in case you need to call on that person, having her work until seven o'clock on Wednesday, I think is a good idea.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you.
So maybe we.
If you take if you take time off some other place, that that'd be fine. Friday evenings is is a good time. A lot of people are coming up then, if they know that, you know, the town clerk is here, they may stop on their.
So eleven to seven forty-five?
Sure. Yeah, I'm I'm.
On Friday? Yeah.
So why not?
Right, I don't have a problem with that.
And that does all pretty pretty much keeps her schedule almost intact.
I would still like to have a start date.
Except for. I need.
Well, I think we can put, so this is Wednesday, Friday, this pay or this week is part of this week's and last week's pay period, and so to keep that consistent, we could say, starting Wednesday.
Well, I I would like to say starting today, because she was, we asked her to start today and she did not.
Yeah. Yeah, so what if?
Has she put her normal hours in that she had been doing?
But.
Yes, yeah, I believe so, but the problem is the hours are Thursday, Friday.
Well, I don't know, your normal hours start tomorrow, so I would say we don't know yet for this week.
Yeah, so we could either say, well, I think tomorrow, I don't know for certain, but I believe that the town clerk is planning on working on Thursday, Friday this week, as has been the past couple of months.
Was she planning on starting the new hours till October twelfth? Is that what she was implying?
I don't think so. I don't, but I I don't know, I didn't, I haven't asked her.
But it is in subordinate to simply choose not to work after we have to restart this week, and she didn't respond.
Yeah, but we're.
Yeah, I think I think that we should put a little emphasis on this is the new start date.
Alright, so. Yeah, so what if we, I would move that, so we said eleven AM credit, I would move that the board set the new town clerk hours as Wednesday, ten AM to seven PM, Friday, eleven AM to seven forty-five PM, beginning September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, and that would leave two discretionary hours every week.
What about Saturday? I thought that was one of the whole purposes of trying to get somebody in the office for Saturday. That would's. There's our, there's our time.
Why don't we just put, I mean, I think Justin is trying to be amelioratory to give her the, you know, so she's asking for not having Saturday hours, but if she's willing to have by appointment hours, why don't we just make them non-discretionary hours and have Saturday hours? Because if we wanna have Saturday hours, let's set Saturday hours.
And that's what, that's, I almost said that we asked for this at a town meeting as to what people were interested in, or we did some type of a thing through the Monterey News.
And.
Uh overwhelming response of somebody in town hall for Saturdays. Despite the one time, I think it's, it was Ken, Steve and I were, and Wayne, maybe it was Wayne, Steve, Wayne, Ken and I. We were coming in and trying to sit at the town Melissa's desk, just so that if people came in, there was at least a face that could say, yeah,
Right.
sorry, I can't help you, or this is what's going on, I'm sure we, you know, didn't want somebody to knock on the door and not feel like there was representation for them. I I'm I'm, I would go for Saturday.
Instead of discretionary, Saturday hours.
I agree with you, ten to seven, eleven to seven forty-five, and Saturday, Saturday I would say you've got two hours that you can choose which hours they are, but they're gonna be filled on the sometime.
But I think they they need to not be discretionary, they need to be posted, is my point.
Yes, yes, I'm, I like that.
So.
But I don't wanna tell her it's gotta be ten to noon, if all of a sudden that totally blows her out of the water.
The problem is it needs to be the same time every week.
Well, that's fine.
Well, I think the problem with not having any discretionary hours is that. So this is the reason why we structured discretionary hours, right, to make, so that people can make appointments.
Mm-hmm.
Um are you suggesting having no discretionary hours? I mean, that's fine, that's fine.
She was saying no discretionary hours, so I I I, you know, I'm willing to allow for appointments, but I think we need to have Saturday hours.
I would say that if she's got appointments that are known, better take, find out along those those days.
But that would be.
But if you have posted hours, you have to have posted hours.
Um so.
Justin, Justin, can I just say something? Um when I was a non-resident.
Rebecca, one second, Rebecca.
Okay.
Are we all, is the board, can we take some public comment now?
I don't care.
Okay, uh Rebecca.
Yep, well, I was a non-resident while I was building my house and I have to say, no- nobody was there on Sa- town hall was empty on Saturdays and that was, what, eight, nine years ago? So and I don't think much is, it never bothered me as a non, I mean, I would have to come up for my building inspections, because nobody would come up on a, you know, Dawn never met me on a Saturday. Um fire inspections never were done on a Saturday. I never expected anyone to be there and I just came. Once Michael Johnson met me there Friday night, because I needed to get something done and it was by appointment and um it was not a problem and I don't think people, you know, it's easier on Saturday, sure, when I work, but if it isn't, people, you know, none of the other towns I don't think are open too much on weekends and. Or are they? I I don't know many people on weekends.
They are.
That was right.
I would make it discretionary if people wanna come in, because personally, everything, you know, if you need to get it done, you get it done.
Thank you, Rebecca. Ellen Coburn? Ellen Coburn?
I wanna ask if, again, if, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um Scott, Scott uh said something about a lot of people wanting Saturday hours and I couldn't hear exactly what that was. Were you, so I'd like to ask Scott to repeat uh his information about how many people do want Saturday hours. Was that in the Monterey News or was that a survey? I didn't catch that.
I believe that it was, I believe that it was a survey that we did, but it would have been seven plus years ago. And it it may have also been a second homeowners meeting where it came up on a yearly basis, where people were frustrated by not being able to come up and have the clerk in town hall to get even simple things like fishing licenses at the time, which I believe now you can get online. Uh so that type of a of an assistance has changed in the last seven years, where things are much more streamlined online than they are now, where you come in and you get a paper license. So knowing that things have changed, perhaps, perhaps Rebecca's comments ring true, that uh, you know, we're not, we don't necessarily have to be the only town that is open on a Saturday. I I I'm just a voice and trying to recall the past and trying to guide the future a little bit here, so uh I'm not always a hundred percent correct in my recollection either.
Uh Don Coburn?
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
You sound fine, but that would be a substantial change in her job from what's been the past. She has never been required to work on a weekend before, at least. That's correct.
Yeah, I think sometimes we've changed the hours a number of times and sometimes it has included Saturdays and sometimes not.
Well, my point simply is, I don't recall that, my point is simply that you ought to check with Donna as to whether forcing her to work on Saturday would be considered an adverse change in her appointment.
Well, I think.
And therefore.
Did we get that question answered?
I think we got that question answered when we wrote the previous letter that had Saturday hours.
I I think, so I think Saturday hours are ideal, I think that the.
Are or are not.
Are ideal. I've always been a proponent of weekend and evening hours, so so much so that you're always pushing against evening hours and I put forth, right?
Right, right, yeah.
Um but I don't think that they're necessary to fulfill the job and.
If she doesn't want them.
Yeah, and so, and I think the fact that we can have two hours discretionary hours, um that people could make appointments if they needed to be on a weekend. I think that is extending out, you know, an invitation to second homeowners who may not be up during the week. Um.
And if she wants to use those discretionary hours at different times, then so be it.
I am gonna, unless there's further discussion or comment, call a vote on my motion. Uh on my initial motion, which is.
Which is Monday, ten to seven.
Nope, Wednesday, ten AM to seven PM.
I'm sorry, Wednesday, sorry, my bad.
Yeah, Friday, eleven AM to seven forty-five PM, which leaves two discretionary hours.
Beginning nine twenty-one.
Beginning nine twenty-one, twenty-two.
Which is next week.
Which should really begin the beginning of the pay period, right, which is nine nineteen, right? Pay period begins Sunday or Monday?
Sunday is the beginning of the pay period.
So we should really.
That would, Sunday would be the eighteenth.
So we should really to, you know, in that way, there's no overage, right? Do you know what I'm saying?
Why need there be over?
There wouldn't, there wasn't a theory, but if if there's discretionary hours in one paid period, okay, maybe I I just feel like that's an appropriate way to start a schedule.
I support. Well, yeah. Why not, I mean, nine eighteen, five. The week is Sunday to Saturday, so the week is Sunday to Saturday, so she starts next week. Nine eighteen would be for next week, so we're good.
Yeah.
Right.
Um so I will call a vote on that motion, Wednesday, ten AM to seven PM, Friday, eleven AM to seven forty-five PM, two discretionary hours, beginning on nine eighteen twenty-two.
Second.
These are the town clerk's hours, uh and we'll vote now. Susan?
Yes.
Scott?
Uh yes.
And Justin, yes. Okay, so.
I I do want to just make sure that you're going to have a meeting next week about the clerk's um.
About, about um executive session.
Not working the revised hours. Right.
Agenda, yeah. Um I will schedule that for Wednesday uh with Donna.
Okay.
Um.
Time to be determined.
Probably six, probably during our meeting. Maybe sometimes we do half hour before for executive session or hour before.
That.
The next item is IT access to the town clerk's computer.
I do.
So have you been caught up to this? Have you seen the emails at all?
I've read everything that was in my, on the server, but I don't recall seeing.
Yeah. So.
This way I've preceded your.
Yeah, I don't recall seeing an IT, other than a comment that apparently at some point, some IT guy erased things and she worked diligently to get them back on from some outside source.
Yeah, so uh for the most part, the town uses Tom Roy as their IT and he works, is it Jay Cosgrove? Um and I believe most departments use uh Tom Roy and Jay Cosgrove, other than the police department.
Exactly, the police department has their own, um they're completely separate from our server and and the equipment that touches the town.
And so the question is, uh Tom Roy wants to access the town clerk's computer to make sure that the information on it is backing up to the town's server. And the town clerk said that she backs up her information on a thumb drive and with another external company. But I do think we've been making a real push in the past year or two, in part because we've been uh out of necessity to make sure we maintain records and use town emails and such. And if Tom Roy du- doesn't, um Tom Roy is the only one with access to the town's database, right?
Mm-hmm.
So.
So let me ask a question.
Yeah.
What's the problem with having him do it?
So the town clerk responded that Tom Roy worked on her computer a number of years ago and accidentally deleted some data that could not be easily recovered and that she doesn't want him accessing here. I think maybe a solution would just simply be that the town clerk could meet with Tom Roy so that nothing uh so that there's supervision and that no files.
Okay, so I would like to read into the record some of the back and forth that she had had and I have had on this issue. So um I had. So, um, I had, she went.
Is, is this gonna help us establish our, our, first of all, it's our computer, right?
Our policy. It's our, well, is this, is it ours or the state's?
It's our computer.
It's our computer.
It's our computer.
Tom Monroy owns the computer, owns all the information on it.
Yes. I think it all.
Tom Monroy owns the computer, all the information on it. We have the right to access it with our IT guy at our discretion.
Yeah.
She has the right to be present if she so desires. Make a motion, let's go.
Right.
Is that a motion?
I would say that's the motion I'm gonna make.
Oh, second.
You know?
Second, yep. I would definitely do.
Because otherwise it's just.
Okay. Back and forth.
And, and we gotta end it.
So is there, so the motion is essentially that Tom Roy.
Correct. We make a motion that Tom Roy has access to her computer and everybody else's computer that is on the same system, maybe except for the police department, which they already have their own IT guy.
And their own server in fairness.
And their own server.
And that the town clerk and others have the privilege, the right to be present while their computer is being worked on.
How can we look? The right to be present.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, are, is there any other discussion or comment on that? Call, vote. Susan?
Yes.
Scott, yes.
Justin, yes, so that motion carries on. Um, the next item is designate early voting hours, early voting location and voting location for state election. I unfortunately did not make the time to consult with the registrars. Is there Rebecca's registrar, is there a chair of the board registrars?
Uh, no. Not that I know of. Scott, Scott's wife and myself, I believe, and then of all.
Scott's wife.
Scott's wife, he's on the cons- on the, um.
Assessors.
Assessors, right, him and his wife and myself, um, because we come in and sign all the, um, forms and everything. I don't believe any of us are chairman of anything. Someone may ask to come in and sign and then we come in for the election.
Okay, well, just because there's been some changes in the law and this life board has a role in setting early voting hours, early voting location and the voting location for the election and we're supposed to co- consult with the registrars and I just didn't, uh, know how to do that, how to start that process, although I was vaguely familiar with who the registrars were.
Would it be counting this consulting if we mailed the three registrars to say that.
Everything goes through the clerk. Honestly, everything goes through Terry. She tells us when we come in, when every, I mean, what to, I mean, so it's, we don't decide what to do.
Okay, so the question is this, we can, we can workshop through it right now and figure out the early voting hours based on the town clerk's schedule and the weekend hours and the location.
We have to have four weekend hours and my understanding is we don't have to have any additional hours, so we're like, or, but we can, we can just why don't we just say what I proposed last week, which is the four hours of the Saturday, um, of the week of early voting and all the clerk's hours, that same word. We comprise early voting hours and the early voting location is her office in Town Hall.
Yeah, I think that's.
And done, like, and we can propose those, we can get her approval if we think it's necessary, but it's our job to set them and it's her hours anyway, so, plus we have to have four weekend hours and Saturday is the day she has preferred. If she says I'd really prefer to do Sunday, I'd be okay with that, but let's just set that.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I know in the past Gary has done the, the early voting at Town Hall. He stands right in the lobby, like, so people walk in. That's where it has been done in the past, so I didn't know it was set by anybody.
I think Town Hall is specific enough.
Yeah.
Um, for the location. Um, and this is early voting for the state election. So, just what, there's the rules about what days, you know, the timeframe or, I just want to make sure that we're in the proper time frame, it can't be within the four days leading up to the election.
I think it has to be the week end that precedes the week leading up to the election, right? So the election's November eighth.
In two weeks.
So, I think it would have to be.
It has to be the third.
What?
The second.
No.
First, the first and second is on Saturday, Sunday.
The first is a Tuesday.
Of October?
November. It's November, November eighth is the election.
So, so it would be the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, that weekend, right?
Yeah.
Because the other weekend's too close.
Correct.
And then the regular town clerk's hours, I think that's Friday.
So the second and the fourth.
Possibly too close, it's four days.
It's a good question.
We can.
We had it up, didn't we? We discussed it last week and now, uh.
Yes. And we're not required to post any hours other than the weekend hours.
Right, we're not required to, but there's no, if they're, if, why not?
Yeah.
If the clerk's office is open those hours that week, giving people more early voting hours is better than fewer early voting hours, as far as I guess.
So the early voting location, we all agree, will be Town Hall. The early voting hours will be tw- the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, or rather than get this figured out, should we put this to next week and keep moving? Because the first deadline is October second that we need to do determine hours for early voting.
That's what I was thinking, October second. It was a deadline, it wasn't the day that we need to do it.
Yeah. So, would that be okay with everybody if we do this next week?
Sure.
Yeah.
It's just it keeps getting added, so I'm starting to get to like, why don't we just act?
Yeah, I understand. No, I, I understand.
I will come to next week's meeting with the dates known so that we can.
With a motion prepared.
With a motion.
Yeah. Okay.
Um.
So we will, and if we want to consult with the registrars as well, now we know who they are.
Um, I do think we should have at least a brief conversation about the voting location.
Yes, sure.
Um, so Melissa has said that she feels it's a dis- do you want to speak for yourself?
I'll practice.
Um, it's a disruption of Town Hall, um, to have voting here. Um, other policies, we've had, we've had voting at the fire station. Um, I think, I, I kind of like having things at Town Hall personally. Um, I think that it is convenient. I talked to the clerk in Sheffield about, they have their voting at the senior center. Um, it does result in some back and forth thing, the way they, because when people have questions about their eligibility to vote or being on voter rolls it involves someone checking the voter rolls to see if they're on or not. Um, they didn't, they have someone that stays at the office and they can call them in, but she said it still resulted in like five or six trips back and forth. Um, to me, I like the use of Town Hall. Um, I, I guess I kind of like this room and I think it's very convenient to have it close to the clerk's office. It's somewhat disruptive with business in Town Hall, but for two days a year, that doesn't seem that big a deal.
Mickey?
I think it keeps it consistent if we vote here, because I remember going to vote one time and it was said it was going to be at Firehouse and it wasn't there and I came down here and it wasn't there and it ended up, I think, was it the Pill billion or, I, it was some crazy thing where I was riding around town
Right.
looking for, to vote. So I think it's always as far as possible in the same location.
It was Doug Lyman's house, wasn't it?
Could have been.
But, and I, I, I totally understand the town administrators', you know, reservations about the activity in the building and being disruptive, but I personally feel like once or twice a year, um.
It happens when you're in a public building.
No, that's fine, so I just think that if you can acknowledge and, um, address the concerns, specific concerns, um, particularly Gary was yelling at quite a few people in here that they had to be quiet. This is a place of business, you know, and he's out in the hallway telling people to be quiet and leave the building when we're trying to do business. Um, also, the condition of the room, stuff is missing and I would like that acknowledged, it could be that the clerk needs to return it or I'm gonna.
What's missing, by the way?
I had another one of these yellow and black things to, um, protect the wires here and protect people from tripping and it's gone, um, and if she thinks it doesn't, I'd like to be able to repair it and charge it to her, um, account and, and just make sure that the room is put back in the way that it was supposed to be. Everything was mixed up in here, um, you know, just.
Actually, absolutely not, because I worked there on Monday. Nothing was touched on the floor. In fact, everyone made sure because everyone wanted to make sure everything was in its place. There were pictures, everything was put back exactly the way it was found and pictures, I know we did it because we stayed a few hours to make sure everything was there. No one took anything at all.
I'm telling you that there were, everyone there, everybody saw it and it's not there anymore.
If it's missing, then it's, it's not that somebody took it. You're making it sound like she stole it. Nobody stole anything. I was.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna move on, uh, we're gonna have to decide at a future meeting whether or not where the, where the voting's gonna be. Um.
I hear a text, so everybody knows. Do what information do we need to make that decision?
Where, I mean, it has to just be, it's a judgment call at the end of the day, whether we think consistency is more important or keeping the Town Hall, uh, more.
Town Hall's a public building, yeah.
So, but let's make that and if we need to consult people about registrars or whoever we need to consult and then we'll deal with that at a future meeting.
You'll set the location, I'm not sure that we need to discuss it with anybody. I, I don't.
Okay.
We should have it here and if there are problems with how it runs, then we address them.
I, I think we can certainly.
Okay.
Well, we could address them prior to them becoming a problem.
Right, and, and, you know.
Just let people understand that.
It's a place.
People in the hallway have every right to speak and talk and mumble about themselves.
It's not a library. It doesn't, we don't need to be non.
A library is quiet.
Yes.
Well, I would make a motion that the voting takes place in Town Hall.
Even if we're not. Okay, I second it.
Is there any further discussion or comment? We'll call a vote. Susan?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And Justin will vote, yes. So we'll have ten, voting in Town Hall. That's real vote, or regular voting, not early voting.
Correct.
Um, we'll deal with all the early voting stuff next week. The next thing.
But, but I guess that if there are concerns, we should address them. Do we want to do that in writing or do we want to do it in written?
Let's just put a draft out.
Okay.
To all people cons- that are gonna be in the building on, in the election. That there is business being conducted in other offices. Um, you're here for a specific duty. Stick to your duty.
You want me to draw something for next week?
That would be great. I think it just has to be a simple, easy direction.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, one of the difficulties is everyone coming in for voting doesn't necessarily.
Well, we're not trying to direct the public. We're just trying to direct the people that are directing the vote.
Right, who, this was the people working the election.
Yeah, right.
Just everybody needs to chill out. People be people.
All right. Susan will work on that. Okay, the next item is executive session minutes for twenty twenty-one.
I'm gonna work on those, uh, as they were finally handed to me.
So we'll deal with that next week?
Yeah.
I would also.
Just for the record, I was not able to gain access to them.
Are you now? Only in writing?
Oh, yeah, well, then, then they were printed to me and I didn't.
Are, are you having problems with the, the system?
Not at home. I am here. I, I have nothing here because I can't fly down.
Okay. Log on, gotcha.
Because I don't know the, uh, the network security key code or whatever it was asking me for.
For the wifi?
Yeah.
Oh, that's what, I didn't understand. That's what you wanted, Scott. I thought you, you said access to the server and I was like, new.
That's true, yeah. Come on out, let me add it, which is a grand hour.
Okay, so, so we'll deal with that next week. I would also, uh, recommend if, if there's no opposition, uh, we'll deal with ten and eleven next week in terms of timing.
Okay. Um, okay.
I like, I will say that, um, ten red, I thought ten red, fine.
Um.
Um, I, I did two and I would say, uh, in light of ongoing events, the sooner we actually address it, the better.
You should.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think I had like a couple of things and they were pretty minor. Um.
My main concern is just the, um.
Well, are we, we gonna let this go till then or?
I would prefer that we do, um, like that. I need to, I think for the most part, you know, most of it's state and federally, you know, has to be what it is, but the one thing that's real particular to the town is the actual complaint procedure in Monterey and who's gonna deal with it, whether it's the HR director, select board. And I want to, uh, I want to start with that.
The, the only other issue I have, I mean, that if you're gonna talk to Sophia, please raise this, is I noticed there's no timeline in the, uh, investigation of the complaint.
Mm-hmm.
And I feel like, like I know it can be difficult, but I feel like there should be some expectation of a timeline. I mean, we shouldn't have to wait eight months, you know?
Weren't there all sorts of timeframes in there?
There.
Name date areas of, this has to take place in this timeframe.
There's nothing in this one. This complaint procedure has no timeline in it that I have.
My, my other concern would just be every time it says HR director or select board, that just invites enough confusion.
Do you see that, uh, oh, I see. Well.
It seemed like it spelled out that there were certain timeframes that had to be maintained.
It has, yeah.
I'm ready.
Uh, I don't see any timeframes. I only see the, what do you say about with the select board and HR director?
Yeah, that's where it was.
All right, we'll deal with, we'll deal with those next week. Uh, so nine, ten, eleven, we'll all deal with next week.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Um, twelve in new businesses, office coverage during vacation or make up time after vacation?
And we can put that up too, if you want.
Yeah, we can put, okay. And I think, is that really related to the vacation questions, the vacation policy question that you and Scott are doing?
And I mean.
In some ways?
Um, no, I was thinking of, um, both the clerk's recent request for, um, making up her hours when she's on vacation. And, um, now that, and Melissa and I talked about this, now that Melissa, she's starting this week, gonna have an assistant. Um, what do we do about when, when the town administrator's on vacation? Can we, it would it be possible for that person, once she's trained and willing, to fill in? We wouldn't have all of the hours, but to fill in some of the hours so that the office was open during the TA's vacation. So basically, coverage during a vacation when it's possible to do.
And by.
Was my thought, so for.
So who is Mo- Melissa, who is your assistant?
My new assistant is Kate Van Oost.
And what is her position?
She's the office assistant.
Okay.
She's gonna be working for me, the building inspector, parks commission, um, I forget, planning board.
Okay, so we'll deal with that. I, I would kind of think that this relates to whole vacation policy.
Oh, but that's a, I'm like, I, I see your point, but I, I think vacation policy that we were looking at, we, it wasn't written this way, but we're specifically looking at part-time, right?
Yeah.
And I think a question of hours being covered and made up in vacation doesn't just apply part-time, it also applies to full-time.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
If we're talking about office coverage, if we're talking about office coverage, not like making up your hours, but office coverage, that's what I'm talking about anyway. Like, if the clerk is on vacation, could someone else fulfill those hours? If the town administrator's on vacation, could we have someone filling in for those hours? That's the question I'm raising. So to me, it doesn't have anything to do with part-time or full-time.
Does have to do with.
Availability.
And payment.
Yes, absolutely, I think.
I'm aware of that question.
So we'll.
But, and it may be a policy we don't put into effect till next year.
True.
But I, I think we should at least be considering where we can, where we have the staff to do it, is that something we want to do? Do we just want the office closed if the TA is on vacation or do we want to open some hours?
Mm-hmm.
And the same would apply to any other crucial or critical office.
Yeah.
Do we make up the hours on, do we have them?
Well, for instance, like building inspector, he's on, he has an alternate. So, police is on, there's an alternate.
I don't think that the alternate building inspector holds office hours in, to request.
No, but he'll do the inspection.
Yeah, right.
So he used to have an alternate that held the best, um, office hours, but he passed away.
Yeah, poor Owen.
It's, it's an item that I intend to discuss around budget time.
Okay, gotcha. All right, um, do you want to update us on efficiency and regionalization grant?
Uh, well, actually, I'm asking for your permission. Uh, the BRPC is, is submitting a multi-town, multi-jurisdictional application to pay for, um, upgrades to the building permit software. Monterey's portion, if we were to pay for it on our own, would be four thousand dollars. Um, so they're looking to have the efficiency and regionalization grant covered for, I think they said there's twenty-one towns. They just want to know if we want to be a part of it. It will not affect us applying for our own if we, which I know, uh, Sean and I have been working on an idea for a fire company. So I just need your permission, I need to know.
So, but where. So, but we're not allocating any money.
Nope.
This is just the grant that they've already received, four thousand dollars to go towards updating the building.
They have not received the grant, they want to know if we want to apply as part of the twenty-one towns.
They'd be applying on our budget cap, right.
On. Alright, I don't see why not.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do we need to make a motion to approve it, or can we agree to approve it?
Just agree to approve.
Okay, we agree to approve.
Yep, secondary.
Is there any opposition?
No, I agree.
No opposition?
Bring us the money!
I have one more question. Sorry, it was something that you actually reminded me of, um, so I got the quote revised from Meridia for the clickers. We can get, uh, one hundred and fifty-five of them with one receiver, the bag and the software. Um, for four thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars, do you want me to go ahead and order it?
A hundred and fifty-five clickers, and what was the rest?
One receiver, long-range receiver, four bags to hold the, uh, key pass.
We need a special article.
And.
And support this free cash.
Is, is that it, and four bags?
At the end.
And software.
And software.
Okay.
It was just a special one.
And no training or yes training?
Says twelve months support and instructor-led training.
We just decided since you've been on the board, which company you hold.
Um, so it's worth your first time going.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna be pointing out that much shipping.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Total, four thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Yeah, but it is, yeah. Um, sounds good.
Okay.
Is there a way to get, like, who else is running this program?
Jim Mawr.
So we can borrow clickers?
Yes.
That's the plan.
That's the plan.
Two hundred and fifty-five is a nice number, a nice number.
A nice a number, it's.
But it's not enough.
No, right.
Well, it's.
But we can borrow.
It's above our fifteen-year high, I believe, right?
For any.
Yeah, one thirty or one thirty-five.
I thought it was one.
I thought it was one sixty, but I, you guys probably remember.
It's very close to the most, it, it's very close to the higher than the most attended town meeting in the last fifteen years.
Great. But we, but borrowing's not a terrible idea, because more is good. I'd rather have more clickers than people, you know?
Okay, so the next item is the chief of police job description. So we already talked about the help wanted ad and job description. Um. It all looks good to me, um.
Yeah, yeah.
So this will get posted.
You approve it tonight, I'm gonna post it tomorrow.
Okay.
And where does that get posted, Melissa, in?
Indeed, the shopper's guide, um, MNA, the website, Facebook.
Be Berkshire Eagle?
I can if you want me to, um, it's a little pricey to put a lot of ads in there.
Anywhere.
And how long, it's gotta run for, what, two consecutive weeks?
Yeah, that's, we'll just, we'll run it for the month, because we decided that we were gonna take resumes for a month.
Yes, I, yeah, we agreed on one.
Or. I think the more you post it, the more you get. For your candidacy, cool.
Is there much difference with this, um, does this job description differ substantively from?
Other towns.
Other towns, but also from the one we had before?
That's weird.
I mean, I guess it's been a really long time since we had a police chief, so that might not be applicable.
We didn't actually have a job description, we have a chief, please, so.
Okay, so this is a new one.
This is new, and it's been looked at by myself, um, the chief, obviously, and, uh, Sophia.
Sophia, and, um, how many, yeah.
The coun- council's read this?
Council was not read this, I can't.
The, did, I don't know if council usually looks at job descriptions?
Job descriptions, I don't think. If we have a contract, right, we're gonna look at the contract for new police chief.
Right. Right.
Yeah, good for sure.
And I thought it read pretty good.
Yeah.
And that it seemed like it was pretty straightforward.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that the chief probably got the template from his chief's association.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, some of it's required by law, right?
That's a lot of wordplay actually around there.
Yep. Yep.
Um, I have, I think that the help wanted ad in the job description, but is there any opposition there?
No.
Okay, we'll approve it. So the next item is, uh, there is a complaint or action or lawsuit, uh, that Terry Walker has filed against the town of Monterey. And all that I'm doing at this meeting is making that notice public. And if Donna, town, as a town council, or the insurance company requires any guidance from the select board, they will let us know, and then we'll make, then we'll make any decisions. But other than that, um, I just acknowledge.
Have we actually been officially served at this point? I, I wasn't aware that we had been?
Not yet.
No.
Right, so, so far, we have a copy that we received from the reporter that was.
Yes, but she said that it's available on.
I, I did call the courthouse, there is a, um, file number that has been assigned to it.
No.
And I called the courthouse and they said we were likely to be served within the next few days. I'm just pointing out that, yeah, that we had this because it came from Berkshire Eagle.
So, yeah, this is where it came from.
Yeah. So if there's any, um, in my conversation with Donna, this is one of the things she want to touch base with. She said, just acknowledge that it exists, and if there's any, you know, her and that Maya will be, uh, working on it. And if they have any questions, or need any guidance from the boards, then over to us.
Okay.
Um, that flips us to the second page, in the mail and correspondence section of the agenda. So I just wanted to acknowledge, as we did for the parks commission request for the playground, we still are technically. ARPA applications for another month was the timeframe that we sent?
Till the fifteenth, right?
Till October.
I thought it was fifteen, but I may have just made that date up at some point.
I think it's, it's October thirteenth, twenty twenty nine.
Thirteen, right, because it, is that a, the, it's the Friday before our first, our, our meeting the next week?
October thirteenth is a Thursday.
Is that what? Thursday, okay.
So.
What is going on that day?
So what, just to catch you up to speed, I don't know how much we have, we haven't really discussed this since you've been on the board. So, one of the federal government programs.
I'm, I'm good with ARPA and what it's about, but what was the.
So we had set up, so we had official, or we had initially, back when the board, I'm the only remaining member from the initial board that received the ARPA funds. And we had said, we'll just accept rolling applications. If, if anyone, if any department, if any person in town has an idea to spend on a playground or a new vehicle, or whatever it may be, um, just send it and we'll consider it, and we'll decide, you know, whether or not we want to spend that money. When Susan and I were on the board, we said we wanted to set a kind of a deadline so that we could gather all the requests and make some decisions at that point. So we agreed that proposals for the use of ARPA funds should be submitted by October thirteenth.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we've already spent ARPA funds on the, uh, Southern Berkshire Volunteer Ambulance, asked for an assessment of seventeen thousand one hundred and seventy-nine. We granted that to them. The fire department asked for fifty-five thousand dollars for the, uh, new rescue vehicle that spells the Southern Berkshire ambulance, um, paint on it.
Did, do, we did receive the vehicle, by the way?
It's driving around, it's all, yeah, it's up at, uh, the fire department.
It's driving around, okay.
What was the amount that ARPA gave?
Fifty-five thousand.
No, that.
Oh, the total amount is two seventy-six one nine, two hundred and seventy-six thousand.
That Monterey was entitled, two hundred and seventy-six thousand.
Yeah. And we have until, is it twenty twenty-four?
Two thousand.
To, to allocate them and then till twenty twenty-six to extend them. Um, but of course, if we can do the same projects now or later, we'd rather do them, you know, get them by a fit in the center. So, right now, we have a remaining balance of two hundred and three thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars. And we have received a request, a formal request for the playground. We have received a couple of informal requests, or requests prior to when we set up the official application form. The community center potentially building a pavilion rather than having a tent. And the renewable energy working group was interested in the money. We talked about using some of the money for town hall improvements and renovations. And then this formal, uh, submission from the highway department, which is for a new roadside mow and tractor.
So the formal ones so far, we've received, the ones from the park commission for the playground, this one, and the renewables did never formally, okay.
And that's.
Can I ask? When you say the playground, is that, is that separate from the ballpark?
Yes.
Yes, and we should.
The actual children's playground and. So, we, we should make, can we make sure he gets a copy of that?
Yes, so the request is actually in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand dollars to completely redo it. I know at some point, we also talked about, you know, we could spend anywhere between ten and a hundred thousand dollars, depending on what should be done, you know? So, to the, because we also talked about, it's not necessarily a yes or no, we might be able to work with people and say, you asked for this, for this project, what if we didn't? It's entirely up to the cycle. Um.
And, and like ironically looking, I mean, you'd have to look at the thing, but it's, it's not really a, it, it's not that many items in that playground. The fact that it costs a hundred thousand dollars, I, you're like, my God, what?
I got, I'm sitting here, you can't sell, I got my mouth open.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's not, it's not like you're talking about fifteen different things, right?
Sure.
It's, it was a, it's fairly modest thing, yet it's extremely expensive. I was pretty floored by it.
So.
Both of them are still.
I know, right?
They're all.
So, the, um, it was for seventy-two thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken, for the Kubota tractor?
Right.
Ninety?
Ninety. Was it just seventy-two for the tractor maybe, and then what's the attachments?
And that's what's happened.
Yeah, I think the grand total was ninety.
Awesome, wow, my. Uh, Mickey.
Is that something that we share? I'm sorry, Mike.
Why, why wouldn't we, we already have mows, why wouldn't we put that on the main warrant? With regular stuff?
Uh, I mean, we can consider that. One of the points the request made was that, and this is what a lot of people are saying about ARPA funds, is it, when it's on the warrant, my funds aren't available till July, but based on the number and amount of requests that we're doing, some items, we may say, you know, we don't have ARPA funds for that, but we did.
We can like, with the warrant.
Yeah, I mean, depending. Right.
And I saw that going like, why wouldn't that be ordinary warrant stuff?
Yeah, I mean, we'll have to have that discussion at some point.
What hap- what happened to the ones we have? Don't we have to remember that?
So the tractor, um, is old, it's a ninety-two, and the AC doesn't work, and then there's other mechanical problems. I can't recall them off the top of my head. I can get you the ARPA.
No, I just, I'm just curious.
Um, I believe until four or five years ago, we contracted out roadside mowing, right?
Yeah, this was actually, we purchased this from the guy that we used to contract it out from.
Yeah.
And it's quite old.
And since then, yeah, and we have more, uh, employees now too, so I think it probably makes even less sense to contract out roadside mowing than it did back when we had three and a, and a director of operations. Um.
How many are there now?
Four and a director of operations.
Four ones, yeah.
Um. So, I mean, I haven't had this discussion with Jim, but I did.
There's some, what, some good emails going back and forth between him and the finance committee regarding.
The tractor, yeah. Yeah.
So basically, we're replacing an older thing within your federal one, correct?
Right, yeah.
Which should sort of, could definitely be part of the regular capital, but I see why they're, I mean, I get why they're.
Mm-hmm.
So, I missed it, but is this part of the private state contract, uh, tractor, so we don't put it out, put out to bed or anything?
Right.
Yeah, gotcha. Alright. Uh, we received a letter from the council on aging in support of the community center pavilion. Um, I don't have it in front of me yet, but we'll append that to the minutes. Uh, we haven't received the community center pavilion request yet from the community center committee, but we believe they are submitting one. This next item is the Department of Fish and Game, notice of intention to purchase conservation restrictions on the two Mount Under Road properties. I noticed that last week, we had only po- posted about the property up on Bear Town Mountain Road, but we already discussed that. So just notifying people that the Department of Fish and Game is intending on buying two conservation restrictions on two properties on Mount Under. The press release about tree work we have already dealt with, and then the letters to representatives regarding parking fee.
Oop, can I, I just one thing, um, you brought up the question of pilot monies for state land. Um, and I did ask Melissa to look it up, and it's, uh, in, for the FY twenty twenty-three, state-owned land, the state gave us three hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars, so posted three hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah, it's a nice piece of money.
Yeah, it's a nice piece of money, but I, you had brought it up, and then I was curious, so I just asked Melissa to look it up.
Um, did, did we, I know we have gone back and forth about whether or not we did want to write a letter to state representatives about the parking fee?
Yeah.
Did we, we get.
Oh, yeah, and I wrote one, I wrote one. Oh, also, this is coming up, so I just wanted it to then.
Almost, okay.
Yep, I wrote one, and it's, I think you guys have a big idea.
I have. Seemed like it was well-written.
Thank you.
Where? Which number?
Here.
Sixteen D.
Oh, take, take one, I already got it, right?
So that's one.
A long time. Looks good to me. The only edit was, um, third paragraph, second line, state, capital S.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Other than that, I would, uh, move to approve this letter from the select board to Representative Pigmatelli.
Seven.
Any further discussion? Call vote Susan.
Yeah.
Scott.
Alright, yes.
And Justin, yes, and we'll send that to Pigmatelli.
I love that you changed the language, you wrote it every time, Scott.
I don't know if I do it.
You said, you said like, C I, yes, and I do, I love that. Makes me very happy. Thank you.
Actually, I'm on, I'm out.
Um, and then this is about the land conservation efforts, and this is for a.
To, for monitoring, yeah, yeah.
For monitoring, for monitoring.
I was trying to keep it as brief as possible. Okay.
Alright, um, let's see, the state of the country from business. Can we sign the Pigmatelli?
Oh, yeah. This is with me.
When you guys make sure you just put it in.
Yeah, we start.
The ease.
I don't have the real plans.
It's a long time ago.
I, I didn't, no, it wasn't me.
There's.
It's crucial.
But it wasn't me.
Wasn't I here for this?
Were you here first?
No.
I.
Scott's first, and, oh, no, you were.
The executive session? Okay, sure, so I forgot you, so I just.
Yeah. Um, okay, where are we at? So, the recent land conservation efforts, let me just re-do this quickly. Looks good.
Okay.
Scott, do you have any?
No.
All set, alright.
Okay, I will send it on to the monitoring.
So. Alright, great. So we.
That was, that was your, your letter to the MN?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that was one of them.
And my.
Yeah.
My letter about the tree work is, uh, gonna be reconsidered as we reconsider the whole shindig.
Uh-huh.
Uh, but that will go on the monitoring news.
Well, we should know more by next Wednesday, huh?
Yeah.
Just to look at that letter, get some more, more, more push forward.
The last John Field.
Yeah, we got, we got Jim and John involved. See when they're gonna.
I'm gonna try and, um, just so you guys know, it's not pressing, but I'm gonna try and draft something, um, now that the planning board has set their next two meetings, um, for the master plan process, one of which is for housing. I was thinking to try to write something up about some of the issues that are on the table for that as a way of trying to encourage people to come participate in it. I'm not taking sides or leading out my view. I'm saying, I, you know, the idea is to say, here are some of the issues that Monterey is confronting, this is a perfect. Now, and, you know, I might say, you know, here are some pros, here are some cons, or here's some things we could pick up if we wanted to. There's a lot of other things, I, I'm not, like, I'm not taking a position, I'm just trying to get people involved. Um, and by giving some like me, hoping that they'll see why it's relevant and why they should participate. And I'll, I'm bringing a copy of that before I submit it, because, and, and in large part, because you guys might have something useful to offer to that, not because I'm like worried about the you I'm expressing, just because if we can make it better, so much for better. Does that make sense? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, and you know what's interesting is, and I appreciated that the master plan did this, but, um, was it the planning board did this, but the planning board, uh, you know, took charge of the master plan process.
I, I think that's a not abnormal thing, but yeah.
Yeah, no, it's not abnormal, but they didn't need to, yeah.
Thankful for, yeah, right, right.
Um, so we'll do the minutes of August thirty-first, I think we put up.
Can I just ask?
Yes, Maggie.
Before you're in this, this takes a long time, can I just make two short statements?
So this is our public comment and.
Can I just, yeah, skip to public comments, because it's on the last public.
Skip to the.
Yeah, comments, questions, public.
Okay, two, two comments, one, first of all, for the parking bumpers that the highway department put in on Nancy Green's, protect Nancy Green's lawn, look really very nice, and I just wanted to comment how, how creative, so that see if the grass is growing. On my lawn.
I agree, thank, but thank you for saying that, I, I pulled down my.
Like, because I see, every time I see it, I go, this one's really nice, you know?
I know, it makes the parking lot look that much like.
And it, and looks like finished.
Yep.
Right, and the other thing is, I have been on a couple of meetings, but the last one I was at, you had a, um, executive session, which went off for quite a while, so, and there were five people standing out in the lobby in summon hall, and we were not notified when you went to open meeting. Until you had already gone through a couple of items. And I think, I just wanted to bring it up, now, this is the first one there, and actually, if I had come up and stood in the hall, I didn't, I stayed down lobby because I could hear you because you were talking on the phone, so, exactly.
On the, yeah.
Just so you know that.
And you were hearing someone else mention it also, and I, I think that we should make a point when we come out of executive session of saying somebody out.
And so, uh. To, to make sure someone comes out and say, no, you guys can come in now, because you were all standing there.
Yeah.
Somebody went by and said, well, should be another ten minutes, and then it was like, give me like a hour, so, that's all.
Yeah. Okay.
Alright.
I'll let you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie.
Thanks for coming, it's always a pleasure to see you.
So.
Bye-bye.
Which one's? So my sense is that the only minutes that we can tackle at this meeting right now are the, the regular minutes of August thirty-first.
Okay. Right, because we have to extend, and we're saying, have session, do we say?
Yeah, well, I'm not sure, um, I was of the understanding that we could possibly avoid entering executive session approval executive session minutes, you know, if there's not a lot of edits, but we have, if we have to discuss it, we can't really do that in open meeting without being incredibly clumsy, but, um.
Who's red and who's blue, Melissa?
It's okay.
I'm red, on which one?
On both?
I'm red on both.
On both?
Yeah.
Okay, I know that you read on this one, because I know I'm blue.
No, I'm red on both, because I see the first change in the book. So why don't we just try and get the minutes of August thirty-first point two done, and if we do that, that would be a really good.
Okay.
Good, good thing that we've done that.
That's weird, because it's showing as purple.
Oh, I.
And you're blue on mine.
I'm de, I'm definitely, uh.
On here, I'm, I'm coming up, because of the column on the current meeting, and it's not the executive one, my comment comes up in blue, so I'm assuming I'm blue.
So, the first change I have on August thirty-first is on item one. November didn't come out on my keyboard at all.
Where?
Not down here?
Oh, down here. No.
So, I don't know what, whose copy we want to go off of, but we gotta fix that.
Uh, let's, you wanna go with yours, just, you already found one, so.
Yeah, alright, we'll go with mine. I wrote in November, but it came out like this. Yeah, okay, typo. Item number eight is in.
Um, so, it, it's kind of moot now, but I did want to know if we, now I know that we a hundred and fifty-five, but we didn't act, do we want it in the minutes that we were purchasing a hundred and fifty thousand?
We can't, we shouldn't go back.
Or does it not matter? Pardon?
We shouldn't go back.
Okay. Well, I wasn't sure if we said it in meeting.
No, because we didn't know, um, we had it since, well, the reason we asked for five thousand dollars for town meeting is because we did some
little research.
Go on, that research, and so whenever we voted, you know, I think I assumed that, you know, five, and, and I had been in touch with Melissa too about the electronic voting, but we only said that we would, you know, buy it to go with Meridia, not, and, and I assumed.
Right, we, we didn't actually say, I didn't remember that we said, but I wasn't certain because I wanted to double check, okay, no problemo, so, that's fine.
For.
Okay, so.
Item eight. Um, I think with, let's just go with either blue or red, right? It's the same thing, which is that it's this, uh, attached.
Oh, right, yeah, okay, this is our usual problem.
Uh, this is automated transcript, uh, that's what you said, so why don't we go with blue?
Okay.
So we'll read, Susan has reviewed them all and thinks that.
Uh, thinks, which should be.
That they are.
That they are acceptable.
For release, but would prefer to see the automated transcript for the October meeting deleted as.
It is largely unintelligible.
It is. Largely unintelligible. Justin agrees that all the ones from twenty twenty-one are acceptable, re- released, the board is awaiting Scott's review, so we'll just go with blue, right?
Yep, that works, and you put it into the they, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll have to, with the three person setup.
Now, we might have to go through them all at the end.
That's fine.
Um.
What, the way we've been doing this is we pick one copy if we're making any changes or accepting things, and then we just initial it on that copy.
Could you make the font a little bigger?
Is that funny?
What's that?
No, I'm just trying to figure out which one of us is blue and which one of us is red, I, I guess I am, yeah, I am blue, uh. Okay. Is it Prashkirk? I thought it was Prashkirk.
R, Earth.
I thought it's A R.
Unless she signs your own name wrong, right? Because I had the same question, I looked it up.
Go, go, I, I thought I did too.
That shouldn't matter, there's a misspelling.
Prashkirk, okay, it is what they. I don't know why I thought it was an N.
So twelve.
Has Lucy had?
Yeah, like that, I think that's a different color.
Oh, okay, yeah, it's like two colors of red or something?
Can we just go with, um, to alert the board as Lucy Prashkirk had informed him that the represent, that representatives were being psyched with input from the select board, yet the RSDPB never reached out to the select board about this matter?
Period.
Period.
Period, okay, that works.
And then. You want to do it all at the end, so.
Sure.
Um. Circumstances have since changed and they are not forming a new committee, but rather have.
Addressing, it was just. Uh, if it's policies, it should be effect in number thirteen, beside one sentence.
Effect?
Uh, well, it, it should be singular, because it's policies.
It's an effect.
And holiday pay policy as the policies plural directly affect in the last, right?
Mm-hmm.
And it, yeah, it actually is effect, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be effect, not affect, yeah.
It's the effect of something. I would have thought it was effect.
Yeah, I think.
That's how something aff- affects you.
I thought if you're, if it's been done, it's, you're affecting the situation, but then after it's done, like, that's the effect, effect.
It's an effect is when.
The effect of, of, of bee sting is swelling.
E.
Right, E, B, or something affects you?
If it directly affects you, it's with an E, yeah, if it directly affects you, I believe it's with an E.
That is what bee sting does to you, right?
With an E?
An A, which will say.
Oh, or direct affect is with an A? God, this is one of the few things that is a constant issue for me, I don't know why.
Well, you, it just, it doesn't mean whatever it is.
I don't. Okay.
But effect can mean you to influence or to act in a way that you don't feel, effect typically means a result.
Yeah, so, so directly effect.
So we'll go A, A.
Okay, directly changes the financial status of members of this family.
You think it's an E? I think.
I think it's an E.
I think it's an A, but we'll go with E.
E.
We're going with E.
Okay. Uh, we're, we're discussing.
Yeah, I know, that's, that's. Oh, well, then we'll go with A. I figured I spoke it, what do I need to say?
Okay. Next time, Scott, just make sure you give an C, better, it's like E fact or Alex, okay?
Okay. Yeah.
To accommodate, um. Accommodate, there should be something after accommodate, but it, it doesn't really matter to me, so.
Yeah, no, I kind of agree with that, but it gets a lot across, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um. So I just wanted, in particular in seventeen, to say that the laws changed, and that we're aware of it, and we're gonna do better in November, that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
That's this week though. I'll do this week's minutes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I mean, I got you.
We're still within our allotted deadline, I just want to see us get this done.
Yeah, no, I agree, it's nice to kick something that's been out for a couple of weeks.
Yep.
A motion was made to review the council reviewed version of the board's letter to the town clerk.
Where are you now?
I like that edit.
It's seventeen.
So how is, this is gonna read on twenty-two, if we.
Twenty-two, sorry.
Is a motion was made to review the council reviewed version of the board's letter to the town clerk regarding her office hours, delete which had been reviewed by town council during open session, the board agreed to take up the letter in open session, a few edits for me and blah, blah, blah. Okay, I can go through all the changes on my copy, so the first change, item one, misspelling November. Item eight, we agreed to go with Susan's blue, uh, copy rather than red.
And put in the A.
And put in A. Um, item twelve, we deleted, we ended the sentence at never reached out to the select board about this matter, deleted the next three lines of red and blue, so that the next word is circumstances. We changed, on thirteen, we changed the A and affects to E, which I disagree with.
And took out the S.
And took out the S. And then. Oh, we're marathon here, and then we just reread how we read that sentence in twenty-two. Which deletes from the board council and which had been reviewed by town council, because Susan put that in the book. Uh, motion to approve eight thirty-one, twenty-two minutes has amended.
Second.
Vote to.
Yes.
And yes, so that's unanimous, we'll sign the thing. Motion to adjourn?
Yeah. You'll let us know about.
Susan will vote on the motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Yes, and yes, and meeting adjourned at, Scott, do you want to adjourn?
Uh, yes, please.
Meeting adjourned at eight forty-four P M.